In this meeting with the land acknowledgement, the land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirojigi. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And we had no closed session today, so if we could get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Salosh.
Here.
Mayor Burgel.
Here.
And now for all who would care to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And this evening, we're going to begin our proclamations. I am so honored to present this this evening. This is, we so appreciate our Coast Guard. This is Coast Guard Month. So this is a proclamation in recognition of United States Coast Guard Month and the city of Eureka's 24th anniversary as a Coast Guard city, August 2024. Whereas, the Coast Guard is one of America's armed forces and traces its founding to August 4th, 1790, when Congress authorized construction of 10 vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws, prevent smuggling, and protect the collection of federal revenue. And whereas, the Coast Guard is a maritime, military, multi-mission service, unique among the US military branches for having a maritime law enforcement mission with jurisdiction in both domestic and international waters. And whereas, 29 cities have taken strides to acknowledge the contributions and services provided by Coast Guard men and women assigned to their cities. The Coast Guard has in turn recognized these cities as official Coast Guard cities, as a way to show their appreciation for the city's efforts to extend so many considerations to the Coast Guard family and their dependents. And whereas Humboldt County, along with Mendocino and Del Norte County, are served by the proud Coast Guard service members of Sector Humboldt Bay and Sector San Francisco, many of whom live in the greater Eureka area, enroll their children in Eureka City schools, and are an integral part of our wonderful community. And whereas, on June 3rd, 2000, the city of Eureka was designated as the second official Coast Guard city, and was re-designated in 2011 and 2019, and has taken great pride in the contributions of the Coast Guard to our community. The city of Eureka, sorry, the city of Eureka is proud and grateful to celebrate 24 years as a Coast Guard city. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kim Burgel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2024 as US Coast Guard Month, and recognize the Coast Guard's many contributions to the well-being and vibrancy of our community.
Mayor Burgel, city council members, citizens of Eureka, distinguished guests, and fellow Coast Guard members, good evening. It's an honor to be, to stand before you today as we come together to celebrate Coast Guard Month and recognize Eureka again as a official Coast Guard city. As the Sector Commander of Sector Humboldt Bay, I'm honored to represent the incredible men and women of the United States Coast Guard who call this city home. Over the past year, I've come to see that Eureka isn't just a place where we work. It's a community that embraces us, supports us, and welcomes us with open arms. The city's warmth is felt not only by our service members, but also by our families, who find Eureka a true sense of belonging. This month in particular has been a shining example of that welcoming spirit. Coast Guard Appreciation Month in Eureka has been filled with events that highlight the deep connection between this city and our Coast Guardsmen and their families. Whether it's the banners that line the city streets, the streetlights in Old Town, the Cook Your Own Steak Night sponsored by the local Rotary Clubs in Elks Lodge, the Zoo Day at Sequoia Park, the Recognition Today at City Hall, and the upcoming, always fun but competitive softball game between the Coasties and the Eureka Police and Fire Departments. Or next Friday, next week's Friday Night Market, the outpouring of support has been nothing short of inspiring. But it's not just the events that make this place special, it's the people. The friendly waves as we walk through town, the conversations with our neighbors who genuinely care about our well-being, and the consistent and constant expressions of gratitude I receive on behalf of our Coasties for their service. These small everyday moments remind us that we are part of something bigger, a community that stands by us, rain, or shine, or fog. As we navigate our responsibilities, from ensuring maritime safety to conducting search and rescue missions, the support we receive from the city of Eureka strengthens our resolve and commitment. Knowing that we have the backing of such a caring community makes all the difference. Today, as we celebrate, I want to take a moment to honor the families who stand by our family members. Their sacrifices, patience, and unwavering support allow us to carry out our duties with focus and dedication. They are the unsung heroes of the Coast Guard, and we owe them our deepest gratitude. Let us also remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, especially the crew of Coast Guard Helicopter 6541, whose lives were lost 30 years ago in Shelter Cove while attempting to save the lives of mariners in distress. Their courage and dedication continue to inspire us all to uphold the highest standards of duty and excellence. Looking ahead, we remain committed to protecting this beautiful stretch of coastline, from the cliffs of Trinidad Head to the waters of Humboldt Bay. Our mission is clear: to safeguard lives, protect our maritime interests, and ensure that the waterways we all cherish remain secure. But we don't do this alone. The support we receive from the city of Eureka is vital. Your kindness, your generosity, and your unwavering commitment to our mission fuel our efforts every day, and for that, we are profoundly grateful. In closing, I want to express my sincere thanks to the city of Eureka for being a true Coast Guard city. Your hospitality, your support, and your shared values make this community one of a kind. Together, we will continue to stand strong, united in our commitment to service and to each other. Eureka is not only the place where we serve, it is our home. Thank you, Eureka, for your steadfast support and making us feel at home. Happy Coast Guard Month, and semper pratis.
Thank you so much for being here. You're so appreciated. And next, we have our second proclamation, opioid awareness proclamation. And if Danette, if you'd like to come forward, we'll have Councilmember Moulton read that into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. In recognition of International Overdose Awareness Day, August 31st, 2024, whereas the city of Eureka does affirm and acknowledge the harm and hardship caused by drug overdose. And whereas, we recognize the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day as remembering loved ones lost to overdose and ending the stigma of drug-related deaths. And whereas, we resolve to play our part in reducing the toll of overdose in our community, which claimed the lives of 83 Humboldt County residents in 2023, together with countless more affected forever. And whereas, we affirm that the people affected by overdose are our sons and daughters, our mothers and fathers, our brothers and sisters, and deserving of our love, compassion, and support. And whereas, overdose awareness day is an opportunity to raise awareness about the risks and realities of overdose, to reduce the stigma of drug-related deaths, as well as to honor those who have lost their lives to overdose, and support those affected by overdose. Now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day in the city of Eureka.
Thank you. I think, I can't, I'm not a good speech maker, so please excuse me. And thank you for sharing that, your sentiments. I think the most important part that I just heard, and it almost made me cry, is that there was 83 people in 2023 that passed away from overdose. And I don't remember seeing too many of them, if almost none, that we've, that were identified. And so hopefully, some people could have the, the, we're having a memorial on, on the 31st at Adorni Center. We're having a memorial and food and some, I don't do this well. I just got asked to do this right before I got here. So, you know, we're having food, and we're having a little memorial, memorial thing where people can decorate their own hearts with their loved ones' dates. And, and hopefully, we can give some healing into the overdose overdoses in the community. And seven days later, recovery happens. So I hope that you all join us. Thank you very much.
Danette, is there a march happening that day as well?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, there's a, so we have a light guide that's coming, that's going to be lighting up the sky in purple. There's a walk from Adorni Center to the gazebo. And at Providence Hospital, there's also going to be some games and some discussion about opiates as well. So.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. So, as my mayor's reports, I've been out of town, so thank you, Councilmember Castellano, Mayor Protem, for filling in for me on several occasions. Much appreciated. So, but while I've been out, I just wanted to let you know that I did go to a critical incident training, a 40-hour training with EPD and the county, which was incredible. I learned so much. I'm so grateful for that opportunity. There's been a rumor about Lost Coast Communications. You may have heard it, you may have seen it around, but that includes K-Hom, a lot of the different local media. The rumor is that they're moving into Eureka, and guess what? They are! So it's super exciting. Yes, I got to have a tour of their new digs on, yesterday actually. It's really exciting news, a lot of great things happening in that regard. So be looking for more information about that happening. It's really exciting. I got to serve dinner to the Coast Guard up in McKinleyville, which is always such a treat. I just have so much respect and admiration. And I even got to drive the Gator, so that was pretty cool. And, let's see, I just have a couple more things. So, the Humboldt Bay Marathon happened on August 11th, and I was out of town and wasn't able to participate. But because I was involved these last nine years, I was able to participate virtually. And so I ran that last Sunday, and ran, walked actually, because I've been injured. And I bested my time by six minutes, so I was pretty thrilled by that. I will tell you that the marathon was amazing. There were so many people that ran. It's always great to have local people, but also people from all over the place that come, because that is a qualifier for Boston, and it's relatively flat. So it's a great opportunity for people to really, who run, to have those, those kinds of things. We've even had people who were trying to qualify for the Olympics as well. Not this year, because the Olympics was happening this year. Let's see, two more things. So, I just want to shout out to Eureka High and Eureka City Schools. So, school started Monday, and I work at the schools. But I really, we had a professional day where Coach Montana gave a speech. And I just really want to talk about that just for a brief moment, because the topic for school this year is belonging. And it was an incredible talk, really trying to really help these kids to know that they have value, that they're important. We hear them, we see them, and we're grateful for them. And Coach Montana, he said a few things, just, he's had the four Rs: relationships, respect, response, and results. And he said, one conversation at a time, treating each student as an individual, and a nine-to-one rule, nine positives before one negative. And I swear, if our community could do that for each other, it would be phenomenal. So just something to put in the back of your mind when you're thinking about what you're going to say. And I got to welcome the Old Town Stewards for their first event. Like I said, I've been gone a while, so I'm going to be almost done. And then I wanted to let you know that NAMI is having, I don't know if you can see it, but NAMI is having a training starting September 11th to November 6th, for mental health for families that have had issues with their family with mental health illness. And so, if you're interested in that, please reach out to me, and I can give you more information. We're retooling our town halls, so more information on that will be coming. And with that, that was plenty. Thank you all for listening. I appreciate it. And now for the real good stuff. We're going to bring up community school update with Rhonda Evans. Thanks for being here, Rhonda.
Councilmembers and Mayor Burgel, thank you for having me. My name is Rhonda Evans. I'm the Director of Community Schools for Eureka City Schools. I was at that same amazing Welcome Back event. I am here to just share a little bit about community schools. Community Schools is really supporting the I Belong at Eureka City Schools attendance campaign this year. So, a few things, just to start off, when you're, I'll share a little bit about how we came about having a community schools grant, which I think is important to understand and know. I think if I can, okay, okay, thank you, Pam. So, a few years ago, we had members of Eureka City Schools apply for a California Community Schools Partnership Planning Grant. That grant was submitted on behalf of three schools in Eureka: Grant Lafayette and Alice Burney Schools. We received the grant. As a result of that, I was asked to come on board, this is my 35th year as an educator, I was asked to come on board to support community schools as the director. We received through community schools about $3 million to really support whole child supports. There's our, oh, you just had it, Pam, thank you. The Whole Child Supports, which says, "The teachers have a really tough job in and of themselves, working on the academic component, but recognizing that we really do need to serve the whole child." And so that means working together with families and the community partners to really meet the needs of a child, whether it's emotional, mental health, supports related to healthy living, also with their families. So to engage our community partners. And so really, that's the goal of the California Community Schools Partnership Grant. This great thing happened. So, the Essentials for Transformation really started that. We look at a hub, and we know our tenant is all students flourish and thriving school communities. And so really looking at the city of Eureka as a whole, as a community wrapping services around students and their families. So what that starts looking like is we have four pillars for community schools. And the great thing that happened is after year one cohort, with, we had three schools. The second year, I worked and with the team, we applied for the second round of grants. We also received the second round of grants. So then we went from three schools to nine. So we have community schools in all Eureka City Schools. The four pillars of community schools work like this. And they're interdependent pillars. And if you are really looking at a community schools model, Integrated Student Supports means that Eureka City Schools have wellness centers at each of our schools. Now, Eureka High has a wonderful wellness center. We have outside therapeutic support services coming in for students. We have wellness centers at both middle schools, all four elementary schools. Those are staffed with wellness center staff. We have restorative practices support specialists at each school site. So Integrated Student Supports means that while a student is at school, we're providing services related to mental health supports. An example of another integrated support is something that we're working on right now, as we're looking at, at a way to get some more health services for students. There's something exciting in the, can't say what it is officially yet, but we've got something cooking that we're really excited about. And then the second pillar is expanded learning time and opportunities. And so each of these pillars has really developed. We've done a lot of asset mapping and needs assessments, and I didn't know what those were before I started this job, and now I can talk about it. So asset mapping says, what does Eureka City Schools already have going for it? What are the things that are working well? And then the needs assessment are, what are needs and gaps? And so we've been asset mapping and needs assessments, doing that with teach staff, with families, and students. And so the wellness centers were created with students. The supports that we are looking towards with expanded learning time and opportunities. We just had a great resource fair. The feedback that we asked families, we served 380 students with the resource fair this last Thursday. And we asked families that came in, what would you like to support your children in expanded learning time and opportunities? And families overwhelmingly asked for bridge opportunities for students at spring break, at winter break, and summer bridge. And so those will be things that we will be putting forward. But the first two pillars are supported with the second two pillars. So active family and community engagement is how we get the information from the community to know how to provide services, and then the collaborative leadership and practices. So two of your council people here have actively participated in our community schools advisory council, which is great. Councilmembers Fernandez and Castellano. We have a very robust advisory council for community schools. We meet quarterly, and we have about 55 community partners coming now to our community schools advisory council. But it's those collaborations, working together, that we build out services for families and students. So we talked about cohorts one and two. We have a project aware mental health grant that we are braiding and blending funds with. So we're able to support a great amount of staff. So our staffing, Pam, will you let me know on time? Okay, all right. So in my role of Director of Community Schools, we have a community schools teacher who supports social emotional learning. She's wonderful. We have a board-certified behavior analyst that allows all of our decisions to be data-driven. Recently, I was asked to present before Mike McGuire's staff. Our stats at Eureka City Schools are really being amplified at a state level, because the data that we're tracking on the amount of student transportations that we're providing and, and increasing student engagement with school with our supports. We have a community school organizer who helped plan our great event that we just had with the, the Fair for Resources. We just onboarded a chronic absenteeism social worker, and in the last two days, yesterday was the first day of school, our chronic absenteeism social worker visited homes already of students that we had expectations of absenteeism being a struggle. And so we were excited to find one family that didn't know that school had started. So that student came to school today. So those are the, that's the work that we're doing. Our community school liaisons and restorative practices support specialists are at each school site. The community schools liaisons really are that. They are the linkage between a school needs and the partnerships in our community. So we're bringing in community partners. I think Grant Elementary School has been a great example of that, but community partners coming into school to work on engagement with students. And then we're looking at our last bullet. This was, it's hard to come up with job titles. We're really looking at somebody to work with the chronic absenteeism social worker. Transportation is one of the largest struggles we find, we find to be. Rural county bus drivers are doing a great job. We have a wonderful crew. But our children live in disparate areas, and reliable transportation is a real struggle. And so looking at a student engagement specialist to facilitate short-term transportation contracts. That means when a student moves suddenly and they're out of a bus range, that we can still scoop up those children and get them to school. So that's our last little idea that's data-driven. So I talked a little bit about integrated supports. We're doing a great job. That's a little, I'm not great with all the clip art, but can imagine the little bus on the right is what we're doing a lot of with our transportation. Our transportation that the community schools liaisons is doing right now is, by school site, we're figuring out which students aren't there. We're coordinating with the community schools liaison onsite. And last year, we had more than 882 student transportations that were provided in our little school white van for students who would otherwise not have come to school on a specific day. And I will say that that is a great marker of we're doing the good work. So I talked about the expanded learning time and opportunities and the asset mapping. We are really leaning hard into student voice. Students are deciding what student clubs they want at school. They're doing community outreach with those clubs. So it is really a student engagement model that we're looking at. So the focus for this year, we've had some great partnerships, I would say Blue Lake Rancheria wrapped around Zoe Barnum. We did the asset mapping and needs assessments for Zoe Barnum High School, which is, has just grown in leaps and bounds this last year. Blue Lake Rancheria came alongside us and said, "We see that your asset mapping says that you need a washer and dryer. We know, community schools can purchase the washer and dryer, but we cannot pay for the installation," which, can you imagine? My dad was a plumber. It's a lot of money to get that water to the, well, there was no plumbing for it. Blue Lake Rancheria gifted us the funds to get that set up at Zoe Barnum, and that was a student and family requested action item. So that's, again, with your pillars. So the washer and dryer are an embedded support. Kids say, "I'm not coming to school because I don't have clean clothes." We put the washer and dryer at school, student idea. Partnerships, Blue Lake Rancheria came around and helped partner with us to get the washer and dryer installation. And the little marks are on the walls for where the washer and dryers are going to go, and the purchase orders have been made for the washer and dryer. So that's on the way. So we are doing some innovative things. Really, the partnership piece is key. We're working on creating in-school suspension rooms at both Zane and Winship. And again, we're looking at data and, from a restorative practices standpoint. Kids can feel like they belong at school when we make space for them at school. And we are restoring them back into the classrooms, and so we're really supporting education. So, pillar two, extended learning time and opportunity, that's our focus this year. So it'll be great to see what the families and students at individual school sites say they're wanting, and then really meeting those needs. Kind of a little bit of a difference. Some information on our resource fair, what we provided. We had over 200 families, 200 people were there at one point, at about 11:00 in the morning. There was a line before we opened at 10:00. And we were out of resources by 1:00, and we were supposed to close at 3:00. And we had 10 community partners there. Shoshana came from the library. We had games and books out. Food for People was there. We were giving away, they had food. We had, our community partners were there supporting with other resources. We had six interpreters there onsite, Mong Spanish, and got a lot of great data from families on what it is they're wanting. So this is my last slide, and I am going to make a shameless pitch for the fact that we would love to hire people for Eureka City Schools who want to come join. From a sustainability standpoint, it's pretty straightforward. Governor Gavin Newsom has put $4.2 billion into community schools across California. The, the purpose and intention is to align Medi-Cal supports for services for students at school with us bridging to wellness coaches across the state of California. Eureka City Eureka City Schools applied for the wellness coach grant. We received it. We are flying our first wellness coach position jobs right now. We have five open positions, wellness coaches. The billing is all done through Medi-Cal. Their positions are fully funded through Medi-Cal at the school sites. So, that is our bridge to sustainability. We have five open positions. We had two applicants. We would love for people to look at a wellness coach position. Really, it's equivalent in pay to a starting teacher salary. You are, it's, the state of California has created this position. We're trying to grow your own through Eureka City Schools, but we have a lot of great things to really celebrate and be excited about, and very, very grateful to be a part of it. So, that was my link to Edgewood if anybody is interested, but just wellness-related. So, I appreciate the tender care that you give to our school district. We, I visited all nine schools in the last two days, spent time, and the, the feeling at our, in our schools is the kids are excited to be at school, they're happy to see their friends, and there was just a great feel across the whole district. So, thank you for having me be here. I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments or questions?
I'm glad to answer questions if anybody has any.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for being here in the presentation. I think you all are doing amazing work with the grants that you've received over the last few years for community schools. And this is something that I'm very, very proud of, just for our community and for the students, when you talk about the concept of whole care of the whole child. And just going back to some of the stuff that you had discussed, I'm, I'm curious, you touched on bridge opportunities during the breaks, the more lengthier breaks. And so, I'm curious what you had in mind, or if that's part of the pillar two.
I can surely, well, I can surely talk about that. So, really, that becomes the partnership piece, where I will be really looking at community partner potential for those partnerships potentially to come into our school district and be in a fiscal relationship, or a partnership where different grants are pursuing different outcome metrics that are the same. But kids so far overwhelmingly are asking for sports camps. That's the feedback that we're getting. Parents, if you could probably guess, parents are asking for tutoring and more academics, and the kids want sports. So, I think we're probably going to try to do mostly sports. We'll get some academics in there too, but for kids to say, "I want to, I want to be here, and I, I want," and overwhelmingly, sports is something that we would want to look at.
Well, I mean, billiards is a perfect concept of geometry, so if you can find a way to introduce that.
Well, there you go. Math, yes, exactly. Thank you.
And then, I was curious, because you touched on the, the chronic absenteeism, and I know that that's something that's, that's prevalent in Eureka City School. You know, we're not alone in that, but that was definitely one of the issues that we've had for, for quite some time. And you touched on transportation. Is that seen more as a core issue now, or is it still just one among many?
My personal opinion and the data, and this is for every rural school district in California, transportation seems to be a core issue. And, and I would say it's not for a lack of trying on the part of the school districts in general, but it is, it's a capacity issue, really finding people who are able to, who can pass the rigorous testing. And then, our region is so large, and so, it really is, transportation, I would say, yes.
And, and then, my last question is about the wellness coaches positions. And so, you had said that they had a starting salary of around a first-year teacher.
It depends. There are two levels of the wellness coaches. So, they have the interim level, the entry level, which is you have education that's in a health or psychology field. And then, your, your step two is a degree in, in a mental health field of some kind. And so, Sarah D. Duncan, who is our project aware coordinator, is, that's her wheelhouse. I, I tap out at social emotional supports, and then Sarah D. takes over. But there's a website where you can go on and plug in all of your background information, and it'll tell you where you are on the scale, what you qualify for.
Thank you, because that answered the question about what the requirements might be.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate your questions.
Can, Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Hi, yeah, I was wondering, when you were talking about the wellness centers, or the wellness center at Eureka High, I was wondering if you could tell us more about kind of like what services you're providing?
That's great. Great question. So, SAGE is the group that created the wellness center, and it's S-A-G-E, Students Actively Guiding Engagement. So, it was a, a group of students that were pulled together to create a wellness center from the ground up. And so, this group of students have now, it's, they're about four years out, five years out, that this, this, the inception group started, and that was with a small wellness center grant connected to a mental health demonstration grant that we sent sunsetted. But that group was kind of percolating in a classroom at Eureka High when community schools came on board, so we joined forces with that group. And so, now, the wel, the wellness center has, we have an outside therapist that our groups are already forming. So, we run, well, the wellness center runs groups one day a week, and so, we run usually five different student affinity or affiliation groups. So, there might be a grief group, a social emotional health group, there could be a trans space group, there could be, depending on what the student need is, we have different affinity groups. And so, we also have therapy rooms, offices for outside therapists to come in and provide services. We've had a contract with Open Door Community Health Services to provide services. We're getting ready to pull back into another MOU with Open Door to provide one-to-one therapy. And then, we have all of the student engagements, the SAGE group, all their events. So, the SAGE students come together, and they also have mental health events that happen in our well space. So, we have then, so we have the well center at the high school. We have two well spaces, each at the middle schools, which are very similar to the high school. And then, at the elementary schools, we have wellies. And so, that's just a calm room space for kids to go if they need a break. And then, any outside service providers, we are linking families that need therapeutic services for their students, and it's, they can't connect with it after school. The therapists are coming on to the school site and meeting that student for therapy in the wellness space at the elementary schools.
Thank you. I really appreciate such a detailed explanation. I was curious, when you were, the one chart that you had up about coordination with families, how does, how do you coordinate those services with the families at the school? Do they have to, do they give consent? Do you, how do, how do you work together with the families?
So, one of the foundational pieces that community schools came in, which is my obligation as a Director of Community Schools, is to look at school-wide systems. So, there's a system called multi-tiered systems of support. It's an MTSS tiered systems of support. So, it basically means that all the care instructors, the, the school administrator, the school psychologist, the care specialist, the community schools liaison, all come together at each school site once a week, and they staff students of concern. So, in the MTSS process, we have a referral system. A referral goes through, if there's a concern for a student, that we, we could reach out to the family. Only at the high school do we have an onsite therapist to provide the therapeutic services. And so, we reach out and ask if that's something that would be beneficial. The forms are all filled out with the family. Family can come in and fill out the forms, and then, the service is provided that way. You're welcome.
So, appreciate you being here and being a part of the solution. You know, our kids are our future, and it's so nice to see that we are doing such great work to support them.
Yes, I would say it's a great time to be in education, to see how things are changing so well for the, the families and the children.
100%. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Just love it. So, this moves us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So, we have friends here for a public comment this evening. Welcome.
Since half of you weren't here last time, I made the decision to just repeat what I said last time because half of you guys weren't here. I'm here tonight not to bring up the usual topics, not the ludicrous crime rates, struggling, closing dwindling businesses, public blight and blatant vandalism, the ever-expanding, constantly worsening environmental disaster, homeless encampments full of open sewage and countless often unkept needles poise, or your poor panicked and pathetic response to COVID-19, or the fact that we have three out of five confessing proud, active, and self-proclaimed anarchists on the council, whose anti-authoritarian wet dream is to dismantle capitalism and to think of riots as seen in Oakland as a good party. Not too long ago, you guys up there supported full-blown lockdowns on small businesses, forced vaccines on city employees, and suspended all public meetings for a year and a half afterwards, trying to come up with the most ludicrous and awkward social distancing rules outside of any Mormon summer camp. Sounds pretty authoritarian to me. Even in East Germany, our government didn't mandate masks for us. I'm here to tell you how and why there are times harsh, maybe even hostile sounding tone with those that oppose your agenda, from drag queen story hours to needle giveaways from frankenfish farms and bird shopper parks, so much about honoring our native population and the environment, out on the sea came to pass. It arises from the feeling of addressing a governing body sworn to serve the public to increase their health, wealth, and happiness and quality of life with issues that are important, dear, close to, and close to their hearts, a lot on their minds, and those grievances fall not only on deaf ears, no. Those that criticize issues, not people, get ridiculed, slandered, attacked by and on local media, social sites, at times harassed and threatened by those that not only align themselves with many of your, of you up there, but that you align yourself with. Respect is earned, not given, and if you as public servants want our respect, then earn it by putting Eureka first in all that you do. By any yardstick, any statistic, any measurement, Eureka is not doing better than it was six or eight or even four years ago. The amount of money and public and other services that us, that a small group of criminal drug addicts consume, gobble, and tie up is so disproportionate that the homeless crisis, aka the most prevalent side effect of the opioid epidemic, has become a burden on the public coffers for all of us and a business model for some. I hope the citizens of Eureka will come out to vote and vote the bad actors out and the right folks in. God bless America and make Eureka safe again.
Thanks for being here. Welcome, Mr. Parr.
It's nice to see that all of you could find time out of your busy schedules to be here. I wanted to speak before the Coast Guard left because I have a lot of appreciation for them. I think I said something last year, but, but my youngest daughter was in a terrible, terrible spot a few years ago, and she met a young coastie who convinced her that she was a fine young lady who deserved more than what she'd been getting. They now have three, three of my grandchildren and are doing quite well, and I wanted to tell them how much I appreciated them not only saving people on land and offshore, but for saving my daughter. I have a lot of appreciation for that. Beyond that, I think ironic that after encouraging, condoning, and supporting the importation and use of heavy, hard drugs, that you all of a sudden would read a proclamation in support of overdose victims. And I was just wondering if during the walk down there from, down by the bay to the gazebo, if the Hatter van would be present? I hope not.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, City Council, thank you for serving our city. Coast Guard veteran, 1971 to 75, Kodiak, Alaska, fields landing on the U.S. Coast Guard Cutter Comanche. My name is Dave Starteri. I'm a third generation here, and now, we have five. And my grandpa came from Italy and fought in World War I, and my dad was in the Air Force, and I told him I was in the real service, the Coast Guard, and they just went. But I'm here because I'm just, I know it's hard, but I'm just so scared of the traffic safety in our community. We have this funding for the schools and stuff, but I don't know if the governor or something can fund us maybe to veterans that could go to see our police academy and just kind of give warnings and occasional ticket, and maybe the ticket money could go to fund that department. I know you have to deal with all the retirements, it's a headache, but it, you know, with the schools, people are speeding by them, and we just really need some deterrent. And my 11 and, and 14 and 15-year-old grandsons are the fifth generation, and they had their, their van and their car. One was totaled by a drunk driver, and I don't know. But whatever you can do, that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, and thanks for your service.
Hey, Chief.
Welcome, Claudette. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all as well. I know that you guys hear a lot of comments about what people say you are and who they say you are, but I've been instructed to tell you who God says you are. What God says about you is that you were created in His image and His likeness. He says that you were all fearfully and wonderfully made. He says that you are of value, even more valuable than sparrows. You are God's masterpiece, created in Christ Jesus to do good works. You are the righteousness of God. You were all created to be the light in this dark world. And this one is my favorite. You are a letter of recommendation to be known and read by all. These are the eyes I must see you through because of who my God is and who He says you are. I know what others say about you, and you might even come into agreement with some of those negative things, but I do not. Revelations 4:11 says, "You are worthy, O Lord, to receive glory and honor and power. For you have created all things for your pleasure; they are and were created." And he is speaking about you and me. Do not be deceived. Of His own will He brought us forth by the word of truth, that we might be a kind of first fruits of His creatures. I love learning about my identity and who I am. I know who I was, and I was not a representation of Christ Jesus in my former life. Father, it is an honor to bear your image, for you are awesome, you are just, you are merciful, you are gracious. Forgive us for the times we forget this and walk in pride and unbelief. Help us lead a life dependent on you, our God and our Creator. To God be the glory, and Lord bless you all.
Thanks, Claudette. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom?
I do not see anyone on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one on Zoom, we'll close the public comment period and move on to our public hearings. So, our first public hearing is an appeal of ACGC, five-unit multi-family residential development design review, and that will be with Development Services Director Kenyon. Thank you, Director Kenyon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
All right, sorry for the delay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of design review for a five-unit multifamily residential development. Here is a bird's eye view of the project site, which is located in the southwest quadrant of the city, two blocks east of Highway one oh one. The project site is located in the R-two zone, a medium-density zoning district on West Boone or Booner Street, one parcel west of its intersection with Garland Street and east of Fairfield and north of West Long. The zoning code states that the purpose of the R-two zone is to accommodate a variety of medium-density housing types close to commercial mixed-use areas. Here is a street view of the project site, looking south from the street. So why does this project need discretionary design review? All new buildings that are five hundred square feet or more with more than four housing units in the R-two zoning district require design review. This is the only discretionary permit required for this project. Design review's purpose is to ensure that street-facing facades of proposed development exhibit high-quality design, complement neighboring properties and contribute to Eureka's distinctive identity and sense of place. The north facade of the proposed building is the only street-facing facade. The project will consist of constructing a new five-unit residential building with attached enclosed vehicle garages, one dedicated to each dwelling unit. Focusing on the street-facing facade, it includes several design features which allow the project to meet the city's objective written design standards. The design includes vertical board and batten siding. The north facade includes a porch with an individual pedestrian walkway and ADA accessible ramp. Windows are accented with decorative shutters. The one street-facing residence has a prominent entryway with rigid window and door coverings. The project complies with all existing standards of the zoning code, including exceeding objective design standards requiring a minimum of two distinct architectural features, satisfied by the development with roof detail, with articulated periodic corbels, two-story horizontal articulation and distinct window trim. Looking at the site plan, you can see the proposed project will feature fenced backyards, both long-term indoor bike storage and short-term bicycle parking in front of the building with a circle-shaped bike rack, landscaping throughout the site, an ADA ramp serving the ground floor street-facing unit, a trash enclosure with a gate, seven-foot-high fencing and a twelve-foot-tall light, one dedicated garage for each unit, providing enclosed parking and a pedestrian walkway. In previous presentations and reports, staff has been incorrectly stating that the first floor is set back five feet from the property line, when in fact, the first floor is seven feet from the property line. The five-foot setback seen on the site plan is for the cantilevered upper floor as indicated by this two-foot-wide hash section of the site plan. In order to approve design review, two required findings for approval must be made. First, that the project will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare or materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. And second, that the proposed project complies with all seven of the design review criteria that are listed in Section J of one five five point four one two oh four oh. And these are, the full text of them are in the agenda summary, but they have to do with surrounding context, pedestrian environment, architectural style, articulation and visual interest, materials, safety and landscaping. There's also a section of the code that sets explicit limits on the scope of design review. And among other limitations, it says, "Design review is intended to address aesthetic considerations not otherwise regulated by the zoning code. And when conducting design review, the review authority may not require a modification to a project feature that complies with mandatory development standards in the zoning code." And it gives the example that if a project complies with the minimum setback requirement, the review authority may not require an increased setback as a condition of design review approval. On May eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Design Review Committee, a duly noticed public hearing was held for the project. The Design Review Committee voted to deny the proposed development, citing concerns such as potential, such as sunlight shading issues on an adjacent property. And the committee found the project detrimental to health and safety, inconsistent with the required findings. The Director of Development Services, that's me, appealed the Design Review Committee's decision to the Planning Commission due to the fact that denial is in conflict with the state's Housing Accountability Act. So the Housing Accountability Act establishes that a local government may not deny, reduce the density of or make infeasible a housing development project that is consistent with objective local development standards like setbacks, building height, density, as this project is. The Housing Accountability Act defines an objective, defines the word objective to mean involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and notable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official. So not only does it have to be objective, but it has to be a pre-existing objective written local standard. So a quantifiable impact is not the same thing as an written objective local standard, which has been a point of confusion. So for example, development has quantifiable noise impacts that can be measured, but under state law, a housing project cannot be denied based on these impacts unless there's a related pre-existing written objective standard, such as our general plan has a standard for maximum indoor noise levels of forty-five decibels. So the Design Review Committee's reasons for denying the project were not tied to an objective written development standard, and the decision was therefore in violation with the state law. Eureka Municipal Code has no objective written standard that's directly about sunlight or shading effects on neighboring properties. Although the Design Review Committee tied their denial to a written code standard that the project would be detrimental to health, safety or welfare or materially injurious, that written finding itself is subjective and it applies, it involves applying personal judgment. So on June twenty-sixth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and they unanimously voted to overturn the Design Review Committee's denial and instead conditionally approve the project. One appeal was received during the ten-day appeal period after the hearing, and the appellant argues that the shading of the adjacent house is an inevitable outcome of the proposed project and therefore an objective standard has been met, that the Design Review Committee criteria require the building to minimize adverse impacts on neighboring properties when possible, and it would be possible to minimize adverse shading impacts by lowering the height of the building. And the Housing Accountability Act would not be violated by flipping the development layout to the opposite side of the parcel or lowering the height of the building. And that city council can amend the zoning code to require additional setback of the building from the property line. The full text of the appeal is included as an attachment to the agenda summary in addition to multiple attachments that include written material that was submitted during different points in this permitting process. So the city council is charged with reviewing the action taken by the Planning Commission. The city council is today considering the aesthetic concerns of the street-facing facade against subjective design criteria and can condition the project's aesthetic design if they so choose. But based on the Housing, State Housing Accountability Act, the city council cannot deny the project or condition it for lower density. As discussed in the agenda summary for city council and previous staff reports prepared for Design Review Committee and Planning Commission, which were all included in the packet for tonight, staff believes the project is consistent with the required findings of approval and recommends the city council hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and sustaining the Planning Commission's decision to overturn the Design Review Committee's denial and approve the project. And I have a suggested motion, but I'll stop sharing until... Come on. Is Derek controlling it? Okay. I can't seem to escape.
Well, I'm curious, during that time, do we have any questions for Director Kenyon? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you for the report. I'm just curious if you're aware of any history of city council members making more than a recommendation, but basically telling a developer that they have to change the orientation of their property based on subjective perceptions of the property?
Well, since, I've only been here since twenty twenty-one, and not that many projects end up with the city council. It's usually, that quasi-judicial power is usually delegated to Design Review or Planning Commission. So I haven't seen that, but I haven't been here for that long. So maybe Miles or Autumn want to weigh in. Sorry.
And Director Kenyon's correct. I don't, I can't even recall. And Assistant City Manager Powell could probably go back even further of a situation where this has happened and been brought to a city council level.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
And so just so I can understand this a little better, this proposed project, this development, has met the objective design standards? And that was a nod yes?
Yes, that's correct. It's confusing because our city has two processes. We have written objective design standards that when we receive an application for a new building, it's, those are reviewed by city staff administratively because they're objective. And then we separately have these seven subjective design criteria, which is what the Design Review Committee or whatever review authority is doing, discretionary design review approval uses as the standard of review.
And it exists right now that there's nothing in those standards that says we take into account sunlight, we take into account privacy. There's nothing like that at the moment.
The standards are in the agenda summary and the... They can be interpreted in many different ways, you know? So the first standard, if you read them in the context of what the purpose of design review is, which is to deal with aesthetics of the street-facing facade, then, you know, I interpret them a certain way. But if, you know, what the appellant has pointed out is that one of them is, the first one is surrounding context. "The overall project and associated buildings enhance the design quality of the area where they are located and enhance Eureka's unique character and distinctive sense of place." Highly subjective. What that means, "New buildings may fit in with traditional architecture that complements the surrounding context or stand out with a contemporary and contrasting style. All buildings must minimize adverse impacts on neighboring properties when possible."
So then would it be within purview of design, design review to determine what is detrimental to health, safety, welfare, et cetera, what that statement was?
Right, that's one of the design review approval findings. It's actually a finding for all of our discretionary permits because it's the basis of our police power and why we can zone in the first place is for health, safety and welfare. So that was thrown in as a finding for all of our discretionary permits. And so we read that within the context of what the discretionary permit is. And part of it is we make sure that whatever project it is is consistent with the zoning code itself, all the objective standards in the zoning code, because the zoning code is implementing our, our protection of health, safety and welfare. So in our eyes, if it's consistent with the code which was written to protect health, that's the purpose of the zoning code, in addition to implementing the general plan, those are its two purposes, then we feel that the development is consistent with protection of health, safety and welfare.
Right, and then going back to what you were saying, you've only been here since twenty-one, and so you haven't encountered much of it coming to this level. And so I'd have to ask more senior staff, has this been utilized in this way in recent history or as far back as you can remember?
No, I've been here since two thousand and six. I started attending all of our council meetings since two thousand and thirteen. And I'm not, you know, I can say that I do not recall a project, a residential project being appealed to this level. I cannot remember.
I will add that while I don't think it has happened here in the city in my memory, it certainly happens in other communities to such an extent that the state has felt the need to weigh in, which is why we're talking about the Housing Accountability Act now, where there's been limitations placed on the ability of local agencies to say no to projects because of subjective standards, such as those that are being discussed today.
Right, and so that goes to that question. And I'm sorry, can you state one more time what that state legislation is?
The one we're talking about today is the Housing Accountability Act.
Thank you.
Councilmember Conchera Stalage?
So not with strictly residential, but I thought that a year or so ago with a mixed use thing downtown, that there was actually some kind of objection about shading with one of the buildings downtown that was built and it was changed, right, slope? And that was actually one of the things that I think a community member brought to me. They were frustrated with that because it reduced the overall amount of tenants.
I believe you're referring to the Link project that was on Myrtle and Sunny that went through design review. That didn't raise to the level of council at all. It went to a second meeting and was approved by Design Review after that second meeting.
Could you tell me what happened at that Design Review meeting?
So Link came in originally before I was here with their first set of designs. And I know they were ultimately, that first set of designs was ultimately approved by Design Review Committee, but it was a bit of a struggle and they had conditions. But then that all got scrapped and they redesigned the project and it came back to Design Review Committee, I think in twenty twenty-two. And there was no change to the design imposed by the Design Review Committee at that point. It was what the developer, Link, was proposing. I think for the one at Eighth and G, they took a staff member's recommendation to have a roof that was similar to the roof of the historic Eureka Inn instead of keeping the same roof as the other two designs. But it was a design change implemented by them with the hopes that it would appease the Design Review Committee, but it wasn't imposed on them by the city.
So did they actually, I am so sorry, I'm not sure if I'm clear or if I have understood. So did they change that? Did they, did they change the way that that project looked based off of discussions around that or did they not change that?
They changed the way the project looked in twenty twenty-two for reasons because it was, at that point, construction costs had changed, interest rates had changed, and their original design wasn't penciling out anymore. So they completely changed the look of it as part of a redesign at that time. That was not imposed on them. That was their decision to do that and did not have...
And it wasn't shaped by discussion around that issue?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yes, a question for City Attorney Luna. So I'm thinking this from a legal context. If we were to deny a developer what seems to be, I don't want to call it a right, but they've designed something, it meets the objective standards of our code, what are the implications for the city?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think that based on what I have seen of this project, this is a project that has been, as you said, designed by an owner of property in complete compliance with the city's guidelines. And to deny at this point, I think, could subject the city to challenge on that point. So in consultation with the Director of Development Services over the last several months on this issue, I support staff's recommendation that you uphold the Planning Commission's decision, in part at least based on that concern.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
On the topic of health and safety, these are pretty standard, these are standard setbacks, correct?
Yes.
Or at or greater than the, the required setback. So I was hoping to see Chief Citro here. This might be a good one for Chief Stevens. Does the, do the normal setbacks on property with a fence that is... Will this development prevent access for first responders, for firefighter crew to access this building in any way that's unusual or, or dangerous?
I, I know that HBF is not here and I don't know if the chief would be the right person. We've discussed this project many times in department head and Chief Robertson has been in those discussions and he's never expressed any sort of concerns about access from this development.
We also referred the project to the, to fire. Every time we have a project, we refer it. And then they're going to have to sign off on the building permit. And this is really common to have really small setbacks in Eureka. And the building code has provisions for requiring additional fire rating if a building is closer than five feet to a property line. There's other things you can do other than a setback to address fire hazard concerns in the building code.
I see. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I, I understand this has gone through the process procedurally and that there's an appeal. Has there been any attempt at mediation between the two parties, the appellant and the developer? Is that something that we've done historically? Do we have a process?
No.
Okay.
I, we always, my staff encourages people who are applying to meet with neighbors. It, it always seems to go better if there's been conversations ahead of time, but there's nothing in our code that, before they get the notice from us that there's going to be a hearing, it's nice if they've, they've been given a heads up, but there's nothing in our code that requires that, you know? So other than encouraging it, no, there's...
Okay. I, I guess I meant before we get to the level that it's at today, except there's anything else before the appeal or, but it sounds like there is not and that's not on you.
Staff has reached out to the appellant and tried to have discussions and they weren't interested in those discussions.
Any further questions? Councilmember Conchera Staloge?
City Manager Slattery, when you say staff has reached out to the appellant, are you saying the people that are appealing, you guys have reached out to them and they have denied requests to meet with you and with the developer?
Uh, not with the developer. We can't speak on behalf of them, but from staff's perspective, yes.
I think maybe that's what Councilmember Fernandez was asking, right, is about those two parties trying to mediate and work together? Not as, I mean-
But what, yeah, it, it sounds like we don't have a process to facilitate that.
Right.
Maybe that's something to look into in the future. I know that's not part of today's discussion, but I know we have future agenda items, but thank you for helping clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. And we will move now to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this item? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for being here. This is very hard for me, so please be patient with me. First, I want to address, no one from the city of Eureka has ever reached out to us. That's a blatant lie. No one's reached out to us. No one. We would work this out. We wanted to work this out. We were here to work it out in day one. No one has reached out to us. That's a lie. Blatant lie. Miles, you are so bad. This has really shaken me up. First of all, this has been a really hard process. We had to pay $800 to be heard today. When ACGC did the appeal, the city paid for the appeal. This is a big dog against a little dog. That's what it's turned out to be. We just wanted equal access. What has happened is, I'm hoping that you all read my contentions because I can't articulate speak in three minutes. So did everyone accept, get that and read it? Thank you so much. That's really important because that's really what I want to say. I want to say the HAA will never be reduced, the level and jeopardized, the Housing Authority Act will never be jeopardized by reducing the level of density. I've looked at the HAA numerous hours. It will not be a problem. PG&E must, will be delayed. They must cut through two fences and the power boxes will be right at my child's bedroom window before they can access my home. PG&E has to shut off the power. We've already talked to them. That's a 15-minute minimum delay to shut the power off because you have to get PG&E to come over. After that, they need to cut through two layers of fencing, our fence and AGCC's fence. We're not taking our fence down. Two layers of fencing to get to our home is looking at a 20-minute delay. A Victorian will burn to the ground. My children will not be able to escape. That's on going to be on you. It is a model, the law, objective for the law, standard for objective, standard means, generally considered reasonable or accepted objective standard where all reasonable parties generally accept that this is true. Okay? That's what an objective standard by law means. Is a model criteria that is generally accepted as correct by most people based on external factors like rules, laws, or common practices. This means it is not based on one's personal individual views. Generally considered, objective standards are considered acceptable if they're acceptable by most people. We all know this will create a shade. I request ACGC do a shade study on my property. They have not done that. They have not done their due diligence. This will prove objectively, subjectively, however you want it, they are going to shade my property for all eternity, which will cause problems, mental health problems, well-being problems, mold problems, desirability for being onto my property, and resale problems. We have this all documented. You've all seen this. ACGC said this design was strategically designed in order to be, meet the objective standards and minimize impact on the neighboring properties. You have an objective in saying that you must, if possible, lower-
Thank you, Stacia. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Please read my thing. I'm sorry, I can't. It's so hard. I appreciate you all so much.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I, my name is Dan Reed. I own the property along with my wife there. And actually, let me switch classes here. So I live adjacent to the property and I've reviewed the, the plans. And if not modified, the proposed plan will have, will have the new building constructed along the east, the western border of my property. And once completed, will only leave approximately seven-foot gap between the house and building. The height structure, about 30 feet, coupled with the close proximity to my house, will result in a significant loss of sunlight as we've already established here. But California law is clear that when a property owner has his property taken or damaged by the acts or conduct of a public agency, the property owner is entitled to recover just compensation. An inverse condemnation results from the invasion or appropriation of some valuable property rights by and under the auspices of the public agency or a private entity with the power of eminent domain which directly and specifically injures the property owner. In this instance, the city of Eureka is making a decision that will have a negative impact on the use and enjoyment of our property. As a result, will lower its value and imposing a physical burden as explained previously. In the past, I have proposed modifications that would lessen the burden on my property such as either lowering it or flipping it without changing the five units. In reviewing the staff notes of this meeting, I see that the council is being encouraged to steamroll my property rights because the proposed building will only impact my residents as opposed to the buildings on the other side of the proposed, proposed project. As a longtime resident of Eureka and the owner of a 132-year-old home, this really hurts. 740 West Boone Street is just a couple houses down. Their house was in a similar situation some years back as mine is now. Similar developments went on next door to the property. I have spoken with a number of realtors and they've researched the issue and determined that 741 West Boone depreciated as a result of the two, the two multi-use buildings that have been constructed already by ACGC. These same realtors assure me the same will happen to our house if the development goes through as proposed, and I will have no choice but to resort to the courts to seek intervention and ultimately damages against the city and the developer. Additionally, as stated about the, the fire concerns, what she was explaining was the PG&E has to turn off the gas meters. Those meters are seven feet from my daughter's room. There's partitions that they're going to have to cut through all those. It's a tinderbox is my house. If anybody knows anything about Victorians, you'd understand that. So I just implore you guys, please just work with, work with us and just try and get this building flipped. This is going to be happening all over the city. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd care to speak on this item? Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Raylena Crichton. I'm the Real Estate Development Director and Community Liaison for ACGC. I think that city did a great job explaining the project in the staff report and so thank you for that clear and concise description. If it's proper, I'm happy to answer any questions, but about the project or anything like that, there's not much I can do to re-articulate everything that's in the staff report, but...
Great. After public comment, we may call you up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be both parties. So I see on Zoom we have Philip?
Hello and thank you. Please build housing. And if there are any ongoing concerns with our code, I hope that we update those. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anyone else on public comment?
Anyone else for a public comment on this matter? I see no one else.
Great. So with that, we will close the public hearing and we will open up our discussion for comments. In our comments, we certainly can bring up both the appellant and the applicant for clear and concise clarification. So I leave it to you. Councilmember Conchera Staloge?
Yeah, this question is for Ms., is it Crichton or Kirk-Crickston? Okay. I was wondering if you could help me understand, was there a discussion around reversing the orientation of it? And if so, what was the reason for not doing that?
There was never any discussion with the prop, adjacent property owners or the applicant ten years previously when another development was built. The owner of the company was physically threatened by the property owner. It, the, whatever the ver, I don't know the verbatim, but it was, "If you ever build here," you know, and threats. So any initial conversations with the neighbor was avoided just because we knew that the nature would be combative anyways. Internally, we did discuss, you know, how to orient this project from the get-go. But as the staff report said, you know, the benefit of protecting community welfare is for the community and not an individual. And so next to this property, there are five different families that, there's other reasons to. When you look at the project, and the best way that I can describe it is when you engineer something, a car for instance, it's akin to saying, well, why don't you just flip it? You know, it's not going to work the same. The car can't drive on its roof, obviously. So to flip the property would be asking us to re-engineer the whole entire project. There's grading, there's surveying, there's every single design aspect that made. It's not just a quick copy paste. So there were many considerations that were made in this project, not only from the design, but from the layout, from the amenities that different, or that future residents will be able to enjoy. So this is a, a great infill project that would provide housing for starting families, for people looking to downsize. We have an ADA unit. Every single unit has privacy as well as, you know, even amenities for washers and dryers, things that, you know, take this project out of, you know, bare bones, slap it up development that I think a lot of developers maybe get a bad rap for. But this is a, a well-thought-out and well-designed and will be a beautifully made project.
Can you stay there for just a second?
Sure.
I have a follow-up question. And this actually, I need to ask Director Kenyon something, and I think really quick first. So, sorry, I'm just, what is the process, Director Kenyon, of when they do need to notice or do we notice? And what, when is the timeline on that?
We notice at least a minimum of 10 days before a hearing. We notice property owners within 300 feet. In the coastal zone, we also notice residents within 300 feet. But in the inland zone, it's just property owners within 300 feet.
But the developers themselves are not required to notice anybody at any time?
Not for design review of multifamily housing. The only, there is a requirement for it for cell towers, like the, somebody who's developing a new cell tower has to have a neighborhood meeting in our code, but no, not for this project.
Not for any residential project or not for this?
Yeah, not for any residential project.
Okay. And so then, thank you. So then, back to what you said, I, I'm sorry, were you saying that the, the appellants were threatening them 10 years ago? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, there had already been an established combative and antagonistic relationship between the neighbors and the owner of the development company.
I see.
So with that, we can have the appellant come forward and respond?
Again, thank you for being here and thank you for having us back. That's an absolute lie. I have never met Will Adams in my entire life. I've never seen the man. I've never approached him on his build. I've never, I've, the first time I ever witnessed him or knew of this project was when we got our postcard. And I saw him in chambers and I turned around when it was denied. I said, "Please work with us. Let's..." And he said, I'm not going to say it. He said, "F you lady." That's the only contact I, and then we got a restraining order in place against him and this woman here for harassing us. That is the story. Everyone here, these people don't have any integrity. That's just absolute lie. I've never, and Dan will come up and swear on the Bible, we've never approached Will Adams. We don't even know the man. I don't even, I couldn't even tell you what he looks like. That's the truth. I'm sorry that she's not being truthful with you. And can I say one more thing? When they were strategically designed their proposal and it's on public comment and you can go back and read, read it, she said they designed it so her tenants wouldn't be shaded. Okay. So then we are accepting an unequal burden of that shading, whereas the builder can reduce, and then his tenants wouldn't get shading and neither will I. If he really cares about his tenants, then he would reduce that and it would not affect the Humble Housing Accountability Act. If the builder really truly cares about this community and about his own tenants and us, then he would reduce it. But he doesn't care. The man doesn't have integrity and that's why he's shading us. Because Rihanna was also years back in a situation where her apartment was being shaded and there's some weirdness going on here with that. And for some reason, she thinks we're the bad homeowner in this situation. And we are just, we are just struggling, working our butts off. And we are dealing with this every day, all day long. Will Adams and Rihanna go home and they don't deal with this. He doesn't care. He has enough buildings going on. This is my only thing I have. This is my entire life. I should be a major stakeholder, holder in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. So have any further comments from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Thank you. And thanks everyone for being here and for making comment. You know, I, I think most people in the community understand that, you know, the, you know, we have vacant lots in the community and when those, when houses, you know, as we're, we've been working toward line council, are developed on those lots, will have, you know, create change in the neighborhood. You know, I think overall, a positive change in terms of more people having access to housing, there are- There are for sure, just, you know, the, the kind of consequence of physics that any new construction is going to create shade is, you know, is going to kind of just alter. You know, it's a change. It's a change in the neighborhood. And I understand, I, you know, I live near a big building that, you know, could see the sunset if the building wasn't there. And that's okay. You know, the, I mean, you know, do I grumble at home sometimes? Sure. But also I recognize that, you know, the, the building has a right to be there. I am sympathetic. I, you know, I, I can definitely hear that this has been really stressful and, and I appreciate that. You know, just looking at the Housing Accountability Act, you know, there's some clear wording towards the end of that. You know, just basically saying that, you know, and it is the intent of the legislature that attorney's fees and costs shall rarely, if ever be awarded if a local agency acting in good faith approved a housing element, a housing development project that satisfies conditions established in, you know, sub clauses proceeding in the document. So, you know, so basically within the, the Housing Accountability Act, you know, they're basically saying that, you know, state law does support, you know, the, the actions of a city following state law, basically. You know, and for that, I do overall support this project. It does, you know, just make me, you know, of course, we hope that people have dialogue with one another. And I do hope that the people who one day live in this project are welcomed into the community. You know, I'm, I'm sure that everyone, you know, everyone I know has a dream of housing. And yeah. And so I, I do think that, you know, this project should move forward.
Thank you. So with that, would you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Oh, one moment.
I can.
Councilmember Contrares Deloche.
Yeah, I, I have a comment actually for both, for both parties and about this and also addressing what Councilmember Castellano said. Same thing. You know, we, we need the housing. I looked at some of those other developments out there, you know, that are right there adjacent. I think they actually look very nice. I understand that they're very tall and it looks different. This project is going to be somewhere, I think in the neighborhood of about 30 feet tall. My home, my Victorian home is about 30 feet tall. My neighbors' homes are also that tall. And so it's not uncommon for there to be buildings of that size that are Victorians. In fact, most of ours are. And so I just kind of wanted to address that just, just a little bit. Cause I, I, I wanted you to know too, that I read and went through everything that you guys had discussed and talked about. I think what I'm, I, and, and the bottom line is with this, and this is what frustrates me is that, is why we have kind of had this extended process when we know that essentially we need to make a decision that's in alignment with state law, period. That we don't really have any wiggle room on that. And yet this has been carried out and drawn out for them and they're spending money on this, thinking that this appeal process could net something that it can't net. And I think we need to be a lot more transparent about that as a city. There needs to be some kind of discussion about that so that this type of thing doesn't really occur because we knew the end from the beginning and they are in here, obviously very distressed and very upset, hoping that we're going to make a different decision. But we're not because we're in alignment with state law. And if we make an alternative decision, then we open ourselves up to litigation where we would probably lose. And I think that's frustrating for me. The other thing that I was going to say is I think, and I think there's a right way and a wrong way to do things like this. I don't think that not engaging the people around a project is an appropriate way to do it. People have taken note of this throughout the community of how this has been handled because it's been discussed extensively in social media. And so people have taken note of how this has occurred. And, and who's involved and who's said what. I also think it's incredibly inappropriate to have gotten up here and to make an accusation against this couple that's here. So I just think there's right ways and wrong ways to handle this, and I think that this has been inappropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
I'll make a motion. Let's see. Sorry. Let's see. I move to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution of the city council finding the project exempt from CEQA and sustaining the planning commission's conditional approval of, of design review for a five unit multifamily residential development in APN 008-022-028.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Oh, we have one, excuse me.
Sorry.
Hold the phone. We have one more comment.
Thank you. And going back to, I think, what my colleague, Councilmember Contrares Deloche was just saying is that it's, at, at least with my perspective, it is an issue of net liability. That's the word I'm looking for, the litigation that we have to be aware of, at least in terms of how this flushes out in our community when it comes to what we have to abide by by state law. And I can understand that to a T, it sounds like the developer has followed suit with what has gone through, at least in this process. And, and again, touching on the breakdown in communication, what it was 10 years ago, I don't know. I, I don't know how long you've lived on the property that you have that's adjoining this to, to the appellants. But what it comes down to, and I guess should have been a question that we asked earlier is if the developer had reached out to the community before they were notified. I think that needs to be something that we flesh out in our process. I think we can improve this process overall. I think there needs to be some sort of mediation before we get to this level of decision. So I'll pass it off now if anybody else wants it.
Thank you. Further comments? Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So we have another public hearing. This is the Schneider RV Park Summary Street Vacations with Senior Planner Castellano. Hello.
Hi, good evening. Let me get my presentation pulled up. Oh. Okay. Derek's got it.
Hey, good evening, council members. Senior Planner Caitlin Castellano assigned to this project. Tonight I am presenting the Schneider RV Park Summary Street Vacations where the city is the applicant for the proposed vacations of portions of S and Front Streets to facilitate. Specifically, the requested vacations include the portion of the S Street right away, north of Waterfront Drive and, excuse me, and portion of Front Street from its western end to approximately 25 feet east of the eastern side of the S Street right away. On June 26, 2024, the planning commission did approve the RV park projects use permit coastal development permit and design review under one report, which is included as attachment three. The developer was the applicant under those permits. This report in your attachment three includes background information on the history of the project site and the development agreement between the city and the developer for the development of the RV park, as well as required findings and analysis the planning commission needed to make to approve the use permit coastal development permit and diet design review. And then at the same meeting, under another report, the planning commission approved a lot line adjustment needed to facilitate the creation of the project site and recommended the city council vacate these street portions for the RV park after making the required findings that the location, purpose and extent of the proposed street vacations conform with the adopted general plan. The second planning commission report for the lot line adjustment and street vacations is included in your packet as attachment two. So as I mentioned in the last slide, the planning commission approved a lot line adjustment, which was between two city owned parcels you see here. And the city owned city parcel existing one in blue encompasses RV park as well as a portion of existing parcel two in red. And then there's the developer owned parcel in black you see there. That's also part of the project site. So the lot line adjustment moved the property line to the east side of the west side of the highway. Anyway, so all of result in parcel one will be in, as part of the RV park project site. And then our music, in our coastal zoning code, it requires that all uses and structures shall not extend beyond the property lines of the site. So after, so here's the proposed street vacations again, you see in yellow. And then once the lot line adjustment is completed and this resultant parcel one is conveyed to the developer and then the street vacations are recorded, then the resultant parcel one, the street vacation and the developer owned parcel will be merged by the developer into one legal parcel. So that way all the, the uses on one site. So there's, street vacation requirements are included in the Streets and Highways Code, section 8300, as well as we have a city policy 4.02. There are two types of street vacations. There's a summary and a general. And the summary vacation is a shortened and simpler process than the general vacation when certain conditions are met, such as the streets have not been used or have been impassable for five years and no public money has been expended for its maintenance. So the portions of both S and Front Streets qualify for the summary vacation as described in detail in attachment two, page six of the planning commission staff report. Also, California Government Code, section 65402, like I said before, requires the location, purpose and extent of the proposed vacation to be submitted to and reported upon by the planning commission as to the conformity with the adopted general plan to the city council prior to vacating the public right of way. The P, the planning commission did do this on June 26th and adopted resolution number 2024-14 recommending the city vacate the street portions for the RV park. The general plan conformity analysis is included in attachment two, pages five through eight of your agenda packet and is acknowledged in your council resolution in attachment one. So tonight, the city council can adopt a resolution ordering the vacations. And then the developer has some conditions to complete prior to the city recording the resolution to vacate. And after that is done, as I said before, the developer will complete the merger prior to the issuance of any building permits for the RV park construction as required by conditions of approval in the planning commission's resolution 2024-13 for the developer's use permit coastal development permit and design review. So the RV park project was included in a larger project that completed environmental review in 2019. And that was described in your agenda summary, as well as extensively in detail in the attachments of your agenda packet. Furthermore, the street vacations also qualify for a categorical exemption to CEQA under section 15305, class five exemption for minor alterations in land use, as described in your agenda summary. So for these reasons presented today and included in your agenda summary, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution ordering the summary vacation of portions of the S and Front Streets right of way for the Schneider RV park. I have a suggested motion here, but we can stop screen sharing for discussion. Thank you.
Great. Are there any questions for Senior Planner Castellano? Okay. So we will open up this public hearing for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this hearing? On this item? Seeing no one in the audience, do you see anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Seeing no one on Zoom, we'll bring it back to council. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Councilmember Molton.
I just have a comment that on your first map, Tulawatt Island is misnamed.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
I think it was a map from online, so I didn't put that.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion. If there are no comments, Councilmember Bauer.
I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing and receive planning commission reports and adopt resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka ordering the summary vacation of portions of the S and Front Streets right of way for the Schneider RV park.
All second. Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent calendar. F6 is being pulled. Is there, are there any other items that are going to be pulled this evening? I haven't, I don't, haven't heard any. Okay, so if I could get approval for the balance of the consent calendar?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Same thing. I move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar minus F6.
Second.
Great. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So that brings us to the Fisherman's Terminal Dock Piling, City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Council. This item here is a long awaited project that's been necessary for our Fisherman's Terminal. Our Fisherman's Terminal is located at the foot of C Street. It is the hub for all of our commercial fisheries. And the vast majority of product from our commercial fisheries gets offloaded there. The project was built approximately 15 years ago. There were some pilings there that did not last very long. They ended up being eroded and they're split in half now, causing safety issues and maintenance issues with the dock. The, the pilings are there to protect the dock as well as the vessels that come up on that dock there. So staff brought to council a while back a grant for $650,000 to replace those pilings with longer lasting, safer pilings there. When designed, we reached out to the Fisherman's Marketing Association to determine what they felt was the most appropriate for their boats and for the longevity. And they requested what's called a fiberglass reinforced plastic material that is much longer lasting and also a lot less damaging to vessels. And so when we had it designed through these grant funds, we had it designed with those in mind. There's only one vendor that allows for this. And so all of the engineering work that was done to design this project and replace those pilings was based on this fiberglass, fiberglass reinforced plastic piling that is produced by one vendor. So as a part of that, staff determined that sole sourcing, this would be good without having any markups. But the main reason is because it met the design criteria that was put there. And we would have to basically redesign it if we didn't purchase these. And it also allows for a more expedited shipment of the products so that we can get this project done prior to the crab season. So staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution to the city council, finding that a sole source procurement of the dock pilings at Fisherman's Terminal is in compliance with the city's procurement policy and authorize the city manager to purchase the equipment not to exceed $300,000.
So are there any questions for City Manager Slattery? Okay. So seeing no one, we'll open this item up for public comment. Does anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Okay, do we have anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Seeing no one on Zoom, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Contrares Deloche.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. You know, the reason why I pulled this was because I thought it was a big win and I was grateful for what staff did. And I think sometimes on our consent calendar, there's stuff on here that's really great. And it's good for our community to actually get to kind of have a little background and explanation on it. And so, and that's why I wanted it pulled was so that you could have that opportunity to do that. I know our fishermen are really happy about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution of the city council, finding that a sole source procurement of dock pilings for, at Fisherman's Turn, Fisherman's Terminal is in compliance with the city procurement policy and authorize the city manager to purchase the equipment not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. Moving on to legisla, legislative action correspondence. Do we have any of that today? Okay. Seeing no one. We just take a break around eight, but because we're going to get into a couple of really meaty topics, I think we'll go ahead and take our break a little bit early. So we'll see you in six or seven minutes. I think we'll go ahead and take our break a little bit early, so we'll see you in six or seven minutes. We are going to be reconvening this August, August twentieth, August twentieth. Eureka City Council meeting, we have councilmember all accounted for. And our first item is the introduction of the vacant building ordinance with City Attorney Luna.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome to uh introduction of vacant building ordinance two point O. This was uh discussed at the meeting on August sixth and uh we got really good feedback from councilmembers Contreras Deloche and Fernandez and Castellano acting in her mayor pro tem capacity at that meeting and I uh tried to incorporate that discussion and those uh requests and recommendations into this ordinance that has been updated in a few areas and is now being presented to you uh for possible introduction at this meeting. And I just want to point those out for you. Uh, under oh nine six A, the definition of vacant building was updated. There was a discussion about whether or not vacant units would be included in this vacant building ordinance. And I did include the term unit here because I think that uh the discussion last time identified a potential problem with the ordinance, which is that you could have multiple vacant units in a building. Um, but if one was occupied, perhaps this wouldn't qualify. And I think the intent is that it it does. If there's a vacant unit in a building uh and it's a noticeable vacant unit that's being uh, you know, called out for its vacancy to our code enforcement officers, we do want this vacant building ordinance to apply. So I made that change under oh nine six A. Also, under C. I'm sorry, oh nine seven C. Uh, there was some discussion at the last meeting about folks experiencing either hardships or some particularized um circumstances that might make it so that uh implementation of this ordinance against them wouldn't be in line with the city's uh policy in this area. And so I added a paragraph here uh to try to address that and we can talk about that in more detail during the questions round if anybody is interested. And under oh nine eight E four. Which by the way, uh oh nine eight is misnumbered. You'll notice it's A B D E. Uh, that will be changed if this is introduced to A B C D. And so truly it would be D four. Um, this was just uh a suggestion that we remind folks of what what we're truly trying to accomplish here, which is uh ensuring the highest and best use of the buildings in our community. And so I added that uh under what is currently E four, but will be D four when the numbering issue gets fixed. Uh, so those were the changes that I made from the discussion last time and I'm here to have another robust conversation about this uh vacant building ordinance. So I will pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So do we have questions for City Attorney Luna? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I I just um not being here, I apologize uh for last meeting. Why, why the thirty days? I I only ask as a um week, it it seems a bit short to put somebody on notice for for a vacant building vacant, you know, um apartment or something. I mean, it seems like it's a pretty short amount of due process. If you know what I'm saying, what do you, is this a common thing in other cities to have something like this in the research?
Yeah, I think thirty days of notice is very common. Uh, due process keep in mind is both notice and an opportunity to be heard. So this is just the first part of that. And in my experience, typically we don't move from a single notice to, you know, bringing the hammer down. Again, in my experience, we often have a multiple noticing uh situation. And while I don't call for that here in the code, it is fairly common. Uh, I would say it would be uncommon for people to get to the second level after a single notice. But that being said, changing that is no problem. It's not required. It was just something that that I put in there. In fact, I think it's a little bit longer than it was before. This may have been one of the areas where the economic economic development commission wanted it even longer. I added it fifteen days or something. So if folks think that that's you know, not in line with with your expectations of this, then it can be changed. It could be forty five days, you know.
Yeah, and and that's what I mean, thinking of let's say a a business going, you know, leaving, finding a someone else to to fill that that uh building. Um, get getting their built, getting their um their business license, all those things. It just seems like there's a, there's a time component that I I'm think that we need to, we need to consider when we think of how much time to give people when it comes to vacancies.
Yeah, so I don't know that somebody being in the building and actively working on it to bring it into a open business would qualify as as vacant under this. Um, and also the thirty days, what we're saying here is that you can't have it be vacant and not uh also one of these other two things, right? Active building permit or you're fixing it up or you're uh offering it for rent or something else like that. So um it doesn't matter. It could be longer if if that's the pleasure of the council, but um this isn't saying, you know, you can't be making use and and getting your building up up to snuff. You can do that.
Yeah, no, and I don't want to belabor this. I'm I'm sure we have other questions, but I just thinking about there's some things we do on our homes that don't require a building permit that we're, you know, fixing them up or something that doesn't reach that level of a hundred and twenty square feet or or whatever, you know, require a building permit is required for. And things take time and after there's an economic downturn downturn, you know, like all of a sudden there's vacancies and are hard to fill. So just thinking out loud here and I'll defer to others.
Just uh the simple answer to your question, is that something that can be changed?
Thank you.
Councilmember Molton.
Uh, Councilmember Bauer, I just want to clarify, you're talking about there because there's multiple instances of thirty days in the ordinance. You're talking about thirty days vacant? Or thirty or the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um. So I have a few questions. When we um in the ordinance that covers nuisance properties, um what is the notice period for that? Trying to get a frame of reference or for how we do this sort of thing in other circumstances?
So we have a few places in our code where we talk about uh the city's ability to n- notify people of their properties not being in compliance with the law and allowing them to come into compliance. In some of those cases, the noticing period is as little as ten days.
Okay, thank you. Um, and um I have a few more. That's all right, Mayor. Let's see. Um, ultimately, when we talk about um a property uh getting safety abatements, getting fines against it, ultimately getting a lien on it. What is the other end of this road? Are we talking about like when we have a property that is a public nuisance and the city has to abate it and might take possession of it? Is that something that could happen at the other end of this ordinance? I mean, way down the line, I understand there's many, many steps before that, but.
That's not what I see happening with this particular ordinance because we're we're trying to encourage people to not simply sit on a vacant property that's otherwise rentable is really what we're doing here. If we were talking about a piece of property that had nuisance abatement issues, we would likely use the other part of our code, not this one to address the health and safety issues. Because health and safety issues are are different. Sometimes they're combined, right? Sometimes you can have both things in one place, but we already have health and safety portions of our code to address a house that's not habitable. Or a commercial business that's not in rentable shape. What we don't have is this piece of the code that allows us to say, if you have an otherwise rentable spot and you're just letting it languish, we're not going to make it comfortable for you. We're going to cause there to be uh a fee associated with that and perhaps as much as fines as well. But that's where I see this going is fines as the uh as the maximum penalty, not the removal of the property from the person's ownership. That happens very uh very rarely. I I do have a part of the code that I use for receiverships where people do lose their properties. Um, but I don't see this being an avenue to that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one more question. Um, when I was thinking about this initially, when it came up in strategic visioning, we were thinking about, or I was picturing certain properties that were um listed for lease. So they would fall under this like actively or they would seem to fall under this like actively being um available for rent, but they were listed at prices that were um ridiculous. Uh, you know, way outside of of anything that somebody would likely pay for that property, um which left it empty and um unsightly. Um. Is there anything in here that I'm missing that addresses if somebody has a property and they are uh listing it in bad faith or they're listing it in a way that that will just never happen? Um, is there anything like that that in here?
It's interesting that you use the term bad faith because we did talk a little bit about inserting the term good faith here under, uh, I think it's oh nine seven B two. Where it talks about actively being offered for sale, lease or rent. Uh, I did contemplate putting actively and in good faith being offered for sale, lease or rent, which is something that we could do that could potentially address that. I think that it is otherwise, uh, you know, the term actively I think could address that, right? If you're renting it for, if you put a for sale sign or a for rent sign and it's a million dollars a month. I don't know that that is actively offering it for lease. Um, but at the addition of good faith could help us here. Otherwise, we're in a situation where we have to um I I think this is one of the areas where a policy about how much something could be, you know, market rate i- is something that I'd like to address in the future if this does get introduced and passed. It would be nice to have some implementa- implementation period to see whether or not that's happening and how and get some data about how to address it.
So perhaps adding good faith at this time, but then um something quant is adding some math in later.
Yeah, once we have those numbers, because I I don't know how to do that in here without more data. And and have it be effective. But the addition of good faith, I think, is is a good idea and I I'd support that if that was the council's pleasure.
That's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Great. Okay. So seeing no more questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? Welcome, Mr. Pesch.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Uh, my name is Scott Pesch. I'm broker owner of a commercial real estate firm and I was here two weeks ago, uh contacted by some clients um about the concern about the updated ordinance. And I I think what I'm here to do is be open, um fluid with questions you might have. This is my thirtieth year in brokering and uh twenty five of those years have been in commercial real estate here locally, but I think that um my clients concerned initially were just about the ordinance itself uh relative to it just seemed in talking to them and looking at it myself, I'm okay with the maintenance and upkeep portions of the ordinance. I think what I get concerned about are the obligations thereafter that if you are put on this vacant building list. You have to understand that landlords and property owners have the same incentive that the city has in respect to getting things leased up and bringing in some income. This is what my point was two weeks ago when I was here. Um. I think that we have to be careful with penalizing landlords for vacancies. I think that we have to realize this is that these are these are a little subjective, okay? And it's a little bit of a slippery slope. I I think that you might look at this as the motivation from the city in order for these vacancies to get occupied. But in most cases, throughout the twenty five years I've been doing this, the vacancies are not because of them having their prices too high. It's simply the model of supply and demand, the economy. We've never had a very it fluctuates, but we've never had a really robust occupancy rate in the city of Eureka. We've always had vacancies, especially in Fourth and Fifth Street. That's kind of our, we have these dead corridors that we realize when you drive by these locations. And more times it's odd, it's not the landlords, it's not the the rates that they're asking. It's just simply, there's not enough demand for this supply. So what I get concerned about is the vacancy plan that you have for these buildings in respect to the items that you'd have to adhere to. It just, it concerns me. It's 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 subjective. So with that being said, I do appreciate the work that staff has done. But looking back and pulling up the old ordinance today, which I probably should have done two weeks ago, there's enough teeth in that to push forward and just enforce what is already there. But I think going from two pages to six, I just, some of the middle ground is a little bit subjective and I would disagree with it. Politely disagree, disagree or respectfully disagree, but that's that's where I'm at. Thank you. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public? No, I see no one. Top out on Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
So we'll bring this item back to council for discussion and a motion. Councilmember Molton.
Um, yes, I want to thank staff for all of the work on this. Clearly, a lot of thought has been put into it and for my colleagues for the discussion last week, watching the meeting was um informative. Always happy to hear uh other people's thoughts, kind of add that to the internal conversation. Uh, my main, I I appreciate that there are lots of um carve outs for for lack of a better term for when people are trying. The only thing that kept sticking out to me was some pretty short um turnarounds. Uh, so I would uh I have several suggestions for uh changing specific timelines. Shall I list those now or wait until after everybody has their chance to comment?
Go ahead.
Okey dokey. Uh, so in um uh oh nine eight F four, which I imagine will get relettered, um responding to a notice in thirty days, I would propose that it be sixty. Um, in uh one five zero dot one hundred, uh filing an appeal rather than fifteen days should be thirty. Um, in F five, uh giving property owners sixty days to pay back for um things done to the property in their stead.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
Oh, I said F five, sorry, one five, let's see, one nine eight F five. Uh, it says thirty when when this, hold on. I'm I'm going out of order. I apologize.
F five, I'm I'm there. Thank you.
Okay, um. Do to do. The uh, the definition of vacant being empty for thirty days, I think is awfully short. Um, I think that that should be sixty days. In, so that's oh nine seven B. Oh nine nine A one is 30 days. I think it should be 60 days. And then if the, if we increase the appeal time that the property owners have, if the staff feels like we should increase the response time that the city then has, I'd entertain that. I don't know if that's necessary. Because we'd be sending the thing out in the first place.
I don't believe it's a problem, but Brian Gerbing would be a good person to ask that. I think that Brian is online. Director Gerbing?
I think she's talking about your appeal, sir.
Oh. Oh.
If someone, if after a decision, they have 15 days to appeal, which I think should be 30, then you have, what is it, 10 days to respond?
That's plenty of time unless council feels as though that providing that more time gives the applicant, the person appealing more time, so 10 days is fine by me.
We'll leave that one then. That is all of my suggestions.
So can I ask a clarifying question about, can I? I'm going to ask a clarifying question about that. So is there a reason why council doesn't make that decision? Why it's just the city manager? Just a point of clarification.
Yes, that's a good, that's a good question. Again, this is, this was a determination that I made that I think in some respects actually helps an applicant to get through the administrative appeal process more quickly. So for example, what Councilmember Contreras Deloche brought up about the applicants on the ACGC project having to go through multiple levels of appeal before their next stop is the Superior Court. In this case, what I'm suggesting is that the city manager's decision is final. Your next stop is the Superior Court. Not that it's final and you don't have any more options, just that your next option is there instead of the city council. If you guys would prefer it was you, I can write that in. I don't know that it, that, you know, that's that's up to you and I'm happy to write it in if that's your pleasure.
Thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Bauer?
I thought about that long and hard and it it feels like there should be an, the city council should have an appeal process or people should be allowed that. I'm just one of five of us here. But I I want to hop over back to what Councilmember Molton was saying about, I I agree that these timelines should be extended. From what I see, working in Old Town, walking around a lot, to me, the problem is long term vacancies. Like the house that I'm not going to say that's been vacant for five years, literally five years, looks perfectly okay to me, why is that vacant? You know, buildings that I see, the window has been empty for five years. How is that possible? And I I I want to understand, is there tax reasons? Or what are people doing to keep these things vacant for so long? So I don't see the issue being a 30 day vacancy or a 60 day vacancy. I see a year. So to me, I'm 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 more inclined to say, why not 90 days or 120 days? Because the issue are these long term situations that we see, those of us that are walking around all the time. You know, someone that's done a lot of permitting over 20 years, you know, most state permits are 90 days minimum. And and it's not a permit we're talking about, but just as far as process goes, giving people the opportunity to remedy a situation. You know, a vacancy should be defined as, to me, 90 or 120 days. Because it's really about the long term situation. And we should have a fail safe. Economy is down, you know, a certain GDP is down 5%. Timeout, you know, because we should realize the situation is, you know, untenable for for a lot of people. I think we should include good faith under item B two. I think that's an important component. And I also think when it comes to vacant building plan, it's important, and I don't know if this is possible, but there's a lot of LLCs out there. And I know it requires the names of of people and I hope that, you know, we don't see a registered agent who, we still don't know who owns the property. You know, the LLCs are a great way to hide who's actually responsible for for certain issues. So I hope we can include something to that effect to to understand who owns a property. So with that said, I'd like to understand what you what you all think about the extending these deadlines, knowing that I think we all understand it's a long term issue.
Can I make one comment about that? And and perhaps if Director Gerbing is on Zoom, I didn't, I don't see him up there, but I wonder if he wouldn't be able to perhaps comment on whether that makes it more difficult to track over time? I'm just a little bit concerned that, you know, if we're not noticing and keeping track over a short period of time, keeping track over six months is requiring us to do essentially what we're asking the property owner to do, which is be responsible for the fact that they're having their their buildings be open. And so it's that monitoring part that is a burden on the city staff that I would be a little concerned about if we took it out to 180 days. But I would like to hear whether Director Gerbing agrees with that. And and, you know, perhaps we could get some more information too from the code enforcement officers themselves about the practical implementation of something like 180 day vacancy period.
And not to speak for them by any means, but, you know, with Acela and there's plenty of databases that can track that really easy. So I'm sure we have that, or I hope we do. I don't, yeah, I don't, wouldn't think that would be a problem with today's technology.
Is Director Gerbing on the meeting? Do you see him?
Director Gerbing? Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both. I think that it is possible to track vacant properties for that long and not start formal enforcement enforcement action. But I do think that there is a slightly increased likelihood that properties that fall into that category could be lost track of. There would still be a case started. It would be set, there would be a reminder set for 180 days later. And I also think that vacant properties can become more problematic over that period of time than a shorter time. So the longer they sit, the more likely it is that other nuisance conditions will arise. So I would just take that into consideration as you think about that particular aspect of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche and then Fernandez and then Castellano.
Oops, I turned it on and off like three times. So, yeah, I I same thing, I have, you know, first, let me say what I what I like. G. Under nine eight and I, all of G, really. I I do, because it's not the, it's not the stick yet. It's the, you know, we're just talking about what do we want to see? That we want them to report, you know? Who owns this? Who, you know, names and addresses while giving us all the information and basically declaring and saying this is going to be vacant or this is vacant and empty and that kind of thing. And so all of that, as I went down it, I was like, okay, I I really like this. I think where I start getting squeamish is timelines and fees. And I, but I also understand the explanation you just gave to City Attorney Luna about, you know, us getting into this spot where the the staff is now doing something for which we can't, you know, collect a fee. I'm concerned about the timelines for a couple of reasons. And one is going back to this opening paragraph, the findings and purpose. And it says, it's the responsibility of property ownership to prevent owned property from becoming a burden to the neighborhood and community and a threat to public health, safety and welfare. You know, one vacant building that is not actively maintained and managed can be the cause of spreading blight. I'm not convinced that's happening in a 30 to 60 day period of time. I think that's part of it is that I I'm just not convinced that's occurring that quickly. But I think that the other thing I'm concerned about is, you know, this week I've had five downtown businesses say they're closing. Three of those have publicly announced and I think we've all read about them, but two of them have not yet. But they're also going to be gone within the next, you know, 40, 30, 40 days. And I just, you know, I want to just say that my concern with this is, is, and I feel like I, I feel like I owe everybody an apology in advance because it's like Renee's, you know, speech about the economy, here it comes again. But I, we do have this quarter over quarter over quarter declining revenues. And it has been going on now for, and I I don't want to quote him while he's not here, but I got to speak briefly with Lane Millar and we talked about, you know, just that revenue issue and, you know, economics and that kind of thing briefly yesterday morning, I think, or maybe it was this, I think it was yesterday morning. So just being cognizant of those issues, I am concerned that it's going to create more of an issue from that perspective. This is difficult for me because my ward covers this area and it's, you know, it's, I'm concerned about these businesses that are just, you know, these empty storefronts that are just sitting there. Also, the empty homes in my neighborhood that have sat there for absolute ages. I'm not even sure what the reasons are, but they invite squatters and then they end up with, or is that the right term? Okay, I wasn't sure if I was, you know, and then, you know, we end up with, you know, the top floor burned out or whatever. Because and so there's issues with that, right? We had one directly behind me in the alleyway. And when it finally got cleared out, there was lots and lots of stuff in there because so many of us had been robbed. And so I think, you know, that is something that we need to be aware of and it can, I think it's still in here. This can also cause problems with insurance too. And we're already dealing with that. And I don't know if you left that in there, Attorney Luna, but this idea that when you are located next to something, we're already all concerned about losing our insurance, that this is jeopardizing that potentially. So I'm aware of all of that. I really like G. I just don't, I'm not, I don't love the timelines. I think I'm concerned about that and I'm concerned about taking punitive action when I think that the economy is flagging.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. I I know it been said that there were timelines that the Economic Commission had recommended and I'm curious what those were at the time. Were they similar to what's being?
No, those were reflected in in the draft that you have in front of you.
Okay, so it was 30 days.
Were shorter when I drafted it.
Oh, okay, well, that's that's interesting. I I I can, I can understand some of the concerns being shared up here from the dais. But there's also the exception here that looks like, what is this? Zero nine seven C, owners may experience, owners experiencing exceptional or exceptional, demonstrable and specific hardships, et cetera. Such circumstances or hardships are convincingly demonstrated, the owner may be granted up to a one time, six months day of enforcement. I'd be amenable to maybe taking out the one time and saying two time or maybe nothing to exceed 12 months. I don't know how the others feel about that on this, but if there are some concerns about those experiencing economic hardship, that's one of those things that's going to be difficult, I think. I I I understand Councilmember Contreras Deloche that you're looking at things quarterly, over quarter, over quarter and seeing it how they might turn. But we haven't really hit that speed bump yet. And that's something that we can always revisit, I think, whether it's ourselves as the council or another composition of us in the future here where it's like, well, maybe we need to suspend this. So I can understand the concerns there. Councilmember Bauer, I don't think we need to insert that language so much because I don't know what would be, I I don't know if it would be 5% of GB, GDP or anything lower than that. But that's maybe where we have to assess it at a time in the future where we say like, we need to suspend this now or at least for X amount of time. When it comes to the time of 60 days, I can work with that and I understand staff's concerns where it's like, well, if we go out to 120, 180 from there, it's like, well, then we're essentially providing this service without recouping any of our staff time that we've sat on it, that we've spent on it. So at least from there, I would approve it with the amendments that have been made, adding in good faith. I would likely want to keep the appeal timeline where it's currently written. But again, we'll have to see where it is because it sounds like we have a few different constructive criticisms here.
Councilmember Castellano?
So that I don't lose track of the amendments that have been suggested. I it'd be nice to get a a motion perhaps with those. And let me tell you what changes I have written down. I have a definition of owner that would address Councilmember Bauer's concerns that I will add. I have 60 days under oh nine seven B. I have good faith under oh nine seven B two. And then 60 days under F four and F five. And 60 days under A one. And 30 days under 100. Sorry, oh nine nine A one. So it looks like basically all of the the 30 days have become 60 and the 15 day has become 30. I'm I'm hearing that under oh nine seven B, perhaps there's some room for additional time there.
So if we could get a motion in a second and then we can continue our discussion on the changes, the amendments currently made. Councilmember Molton?
I'll make the motion. I I would change my suggestion for oh nine seven B from 30 day or rather than 60, how about 90? Split the difference. So with that change to my suggestions, I'm looking for, I move that we waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 1038 dash CS, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing Title 15, Chapter 150, Sections 150 dot oh nine five through 150 dot oh nine seven with Sections 150 dot oh nine five through 150 dot 100 pertaining to vacant commercial, industrial and residential buildings.
With the current amendments?
With the current amendments.
Can I just get clarity on one additional amendment there for the appeal portion? Would that be extending out to 30 days? And would that also include city council being the?
I did not, that was not part of my motion. If you want to make a friendly.
I apologize, I actually did write that down. I just didn't include it when I was reading back what I had, what I had written down. So the city council appeal.
Would that be after the city manager or instead of?
After.
I'm I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we have a motion. Get a second, we can carry on our discussion.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second now. Councilmember Castellano? Thank you.
Generally, you know, I I agree with the spirit of council members' recommendations. You know, and I do agree that, I think we all understand what we're getting at. Our kind of neglected vacant buildings or or long term vacant buildings that are also for rent. I just want to throw in there, which and and I understand wanting to address that at a future time. I do think in terms of staff time, it would be easier to go ahead and register the buildings, but just not charge any fees for the first, you know, 180 days or six months. I feel like that would be an easier fix than sort of postponing it and having to be like, has it been 180 days since this building was, you know? I just think that puts more process on staff, but that that's my feeling. I wouldn't block this, but I I think there's easier ways to go about it.
So just to be clear, typically when we do do an ordinance, you know, it'll come back for adoption if if voted on to go past introduction. For this one, it'll be different because after it does do adoption, it's typically 30 days. We would still need to come back to council if this is adopted in the future with a fee schedule and get council's approval for the fee for the monitoring fee. So it wouldn't be happening like a typical ordinance because we'll have to come back with a fee to you guys for approval for the the monitoring fee.
So and I guess to that, and thank you for that clarification. So I guess to that point, I think it would be easier to address some of these things in the the monitoring fee schedule versus in the ordinance. But also, you know, I will. I'm not stuck on it. So, there you go.
I mean, we have a motion in a second, but by all, by all means, if, if introduction three point O has to happen, I'm open to it. Really, this is, you know, we want to make this ordinance what, what council wants it to be, so let's make sure we do that.
So do we have any further comments on this? Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Yeah, there's just, you know, um, one of the things I keep going back to is just concerns over, you know, objective versus subjective kind of like explanations on things, like, I actually, you know, the one, you know, actively maintained, um, you know, good faith, I mean, all of this is kind of requiring everybody to kind of make decisions individually on the fly, and not that we don't already, you know, have expectations and imbue staff with those types of things, but I, I am con- concerned about the vagaries, but I think another thing too, um, this one line just makes me feel like maybe a little squeamish. Um, if such circumstances or hardships are convincingly demonstrated, and I'm trying to imagine what that would look like. Halfway down on page two, that's C. That's, what is that? That's nine seven under C. You know, I just, you know, kind of the idea of like what that looks like. So, again, I really like, you know, G where we're kind of saying, here's what we want you to do. And, you know, cognizant of that, I'm also, so this is just my last thing, and I'm, then I'm done. I lie. But, um, the, I'm concerned about inequity in fee scaling. And because, uh, you know, we, we are talking about this potentially as, what is it? Where is it? A thousand dollars, and then, you know, and then at this point, then it'd be five thousand dollars a month, and I, and my concern is, um, you know, that would, that that one size fits all thing, unless I'm not understanding this correctly, that could include like, somebody who owns one little thing that, you know, leases for a thousand dollars a month. Um, or, you know, somebody that has some big thing that could potentially lease for ten or fifteen thousand dollars a month. So I'm concerned about like inequities and fee schedules too, if that was pursued.
Do either of you care to speak on that?
I just want to, definition wise, the, the fee is different than the fine, what you're talking about for a thousand and five thousand is the actual fine once it's deemed to be vacant, and those are fines.
Okay.
Not set by council.
No, I appreciate that. Maybe sort of potato, potato though, because that, that result is sort of the same.
I mean, just philosophically, I agree, most fines and fees are regressive. I don't have a fix for that in this case, uh, but I hear you, and I'd be willing to entertain something if, if you had, if council wanted to try to address that here.
I think I'm just concerned about, we have residential and we have commercial, and we, there's all of these kinds of little details and little things here and there inside of these things, and, um, I'm, I'm worried that, uh, it's too broad of a thing to apply to so many different kinds of minutia. I think that's where my concern is at, that little things are going to pop up all over the place, and we're going to be trying to catch tuna and we're catching dolphins. Terrible saying.
Can these items be brought? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I, I do think it's important just to clarify for the public, uh, we're talking about the fines, and so this is if someone does not register their property, if they don't do do these things. So basically, if they don't act like responsible property owners, you know, and in that case, I, I actually think for ease of staffing, you know, it's fine if it's a blanket fine, they, they have, and hopefully, hopefully it will encourage people to do actually a pretty simple task of registering their property, um, which isn't, you know, too much to ask.
Councilmember Moulton.
Uh, it does say up to or not to exceed, um, these amounts that are in here. Does that mean that the, the fine could be, could come in lower?
My, my advice to code enforcement would be to use the, the fine, the thousand dollars per month. The not to exceed is language I would consider striking. I don't want it to be that subjective, so. Standard language that should be changed.
I see.
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton.
And so the fines and fees won't be discussed together during the fee schedule. We'll be doing the fines first and then the fees.
No, no, the fines are set here, uh, and this is standard. The fees are set in the fee schedule.
Great, thank you. Great, okay. So, we've had much conversation. Is there any further conversation, questions, comments, concerns? Those all start with a C. Great, well. Okay, so Councilmember Fernandez.
Right, uh, your initial motion here is for ninety days, as you had made it, correct?
For a property to be defined as vacant after it is empty for ninety days rather than thirty.
Right. And I'm still eyeballing sixty.
You're eyeballing sixty in there at like one, one twenty, one.
Yeah.
That was my compromise. I would be fine with sixty. But I thought ninety would get us closer to, um, addressing other concerns. Oh, I see. Um, no, I'd stick with ninety.
Great. So, we have a motion on the table. We have a second. There's no further comments? Councilmember Bauer.
This is a, I mean, we're doing, we're introducing this, right? The next step, there'd still be room for modifications. We're not setting this in stone.
I'm much more comfortable making these kinds of modifications on introduction because there's a second opportunity for the public to come and comment on it. At the adoption stage, I would be less comfortable with this many changes, so. Uh, it's not set in stone because you could still say no tonight, A, or you could say no, uh, in two weeks, so this isn't set in stone. This is just a motion and a second with these changes that I can bring back for further discussion next time around. But if substantial changes are still, the will of the council at the next meeting, then I might suggest something different than changing them again and adopting at that meeting, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I, I mean, I just hear a lot of different opinions still, and we're trying to compromise. You know, my gut feeling is we don't have a rush, you know, that we flesh it out again and a little more. I don't want to create another agenda item that is unnecessary.
I mean, like I said before, I don't want council to feel pressured to adopt something that, you know, at all. If this isn't what council wants, or you want to spend more time on it, then then another motion is an option for you, uh, to, or, or say no tonight. And we can bring it back at a, at another time. So, this was developed, keep in mind, this was developed, you know, at your request. And if it's not meeting those expectations for whatever reasons, changed circumstances, or, you know, the complexities of trying to, to implement something like this, then I think there are options available to you.
That being said, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Looks like everybody's exhausted their comments, so we will vote.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez and Contreras Deloche dissenting. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the scout, salary schedule update, uh, for July twenty twenty four with Director Folger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, thank you very much. This item is being presented to you orally as required by state, um, Cal-Pur's law. So when you guys update the salary schedule, um, to reflect changes that occur throughout the year, and particularly at budget times such as mid-year, and when adopting the, uh, the annual budget, there's quite a few personnel changes that can occur through that. So this is just reflecting what has already occurred and been approved and adopted. It's just being now reflected in the new salary schedule. And when we do that, and these, um, changes affect executive salaries, it is required that they be reported orally. So, with that, um, again, the salary schedule update is reflecting the wage increases that were agreed to during negotiations with the city's bargaining units, and were extended to the unrepresented employee groups as well, which went into effect on July first of twenty twenty four. It also reflects class and comp changes that were enacted through the budget adoption process. Um, and with that, the positions that are affected are your, the Chief of Police, City Attorney, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and all of your department heads. And so for those positions, they also received the five percent cost of living adjustment that was applied across the board. Um, and with that, I am here for any questions.
Thank you, Director Folger. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public here that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no, do you see anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
So we will bring it back to council for a motion? Or any comments? Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council approving city's salary pay rate schedule for all regular full-time, regular part-time, and temporary positions and classifications reflecting salary adjustments for various positions and establishing pay rates for new classifications.
I'll second. Thank you. Please, did you have a comment? Oh, you have a question? That you didn't want to ask when we were doing questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I had a question about, um, on the, let me pull it up really quick. So, on the salary schedule, um, and I was looking at, um, our different, uh, police officers have, for intermediate, um, post certifications, they have a seven percent benefit. I don't know what you would call that. What would you call that? What is it called?
It's just a.
So that, we have, um, those are pay adjustments for police officers that is fairly common in the field, uh, for police officers to receive, uh, increased pay for attaining different levels of post certification. Post is Police Officer Standards and Training. That's what it stands for. So when we get those intermediate and advanced certs, uh, we break those out to show the pay rates in our salary schedule. That not only is something that, um, aligns our salary with Pur's requirements, but also it makes it clear to anybody, any would-be job seekers, like what their pay rate would be if they were to be coming over and holding those certs.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I, I'm familiar with intermediate, advanced, post certifications and what that means. What I was curious about, um, and thank you for explaining the other part because I didn't know that, was, um, why we have intermediate seven percent, there's that increase, and then for advanced, there's a fourteen percent increase, but it stops at sergeants and excludes commanders or assistant chiefs. So I was curious if you could explain why it stops there.
Because an intermediate or an advanced, um, pay cert, or those kind of certifications would generally be considered as, um, like sort of a minimum requirement for those executive and higher level managerial style, positions, as opposed to a patrol officer or, um, your sergeants.
Okay, so the different, is there any level between sergeant and commander? It goes sergeant, commander? Is that how it goes?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, and so you're, that, so that increase of seven or fourteen percent is capped right there at the sergeant, and then doesn't continue up from that point.
No, it's, I guess, you would kind of say that that would be reflected in the pay rate that they have, given the required qualifications. So, or like commander and assistant chief and, and chief of police.
Yeah, and we can go through some history. We had, I believe it was lieutenants, I forget. But we went through this a while back, and when we had lieutenants, they were at a certain pay, and when we took that away, I don't know if it's lieutenant, so correct me if I'm wrong, Director Folger, but when we did have that, we made adjustments to the salaries for that level, um, to accommodate that seven and fourteen percent, and made it reflective and took it out of those management positions at that time. And I don't know if you remember when that was, Director Folger.
Yeah, that would have been probably close to five, four or five years ago. I don't know the exact dates, but, um, yeah, you're correct. We, we built the, those baselines into the salary levels for the positions that are not eligible for the cert pay, again, um, because those kind of certifications for those higher level classes would be considered sort of a, an expectation that people would have those in order to be considered for appointment to a commander or higher.
Okay, so they had been, that had been part of it up until four or five years ago, and then at that point, you guys adjusted their baseline salary schedule for commander and above to reflect the loss of the seven or fourteen percent because.
Well, not necessarily the loss, but to reflect that being a requirement of their job, and, um, you know, it's very typical that we have that same thing, so park superintendent, harbor superintendent, um, there are qualifications that are required of their job that they don't get that extra pay for. For parks, I believe it's master gardener and um, playground inspector, there's an expectation that those are there, and so those are built into there, and they don't get that cert pay for those things.
If I, if I may, I think to answer part of that question more clearly is the pay, the position was not paid less. When we removed the, their eligibility for cert pay, we incorporated that elevated pay rate that they, that fourteen percent into the, this, the pay ranges that they were at. So that was something that was wire rated into the, um, the positions for the incumbents. We're, we're talking about is also, um, the, the positions that were affected by that were captains. And we no longer have that position reflected in our class and comp plan. It is now commander, which is paid considerably higher than captains previously were.
What, so captains was in between sergeant and commanders, and so those have gone away?
Correct.
I see.
That was something that was done with the reorganization by, uh, Chief Jarvis.
Okay, and so this is something that they used to get, but they don't, really quick question, sergeants are hourly and commanders are salary? Is that right? Or are they all salary?
Sergeants are hourly and commanders and above are, um, salary.
So with the, with them no long, with commanders no longer getting that additional for additional education, or, you know, because it's expected, where does that place them, uh, as far as, you know, salaried versus hourly and for sergeants who are getting seven or fourteen percent for these additional educations and certifications?
That was, as Director Folger explained, that was factored into the wages of those higher positions that are in admin. Um, I think what you're, and I don't want to assume what you're getting at, but it, it seems to be it's about overtime and them not getting overtime. No, commanders do not get overtime, and yes, sergeants do get overtime.
No, I appreciate that. I think actually what I'm, um, what I was curious about is, um, I, I think we all have an interest in making sure our police department is as educated and experienced and trained as they can be, and so, um, I think what I was wondering is if, um, when they're moving from a sergeant into these commander positions where there's arguably more responsibility, more expectations, do they, because of salary and because they no longer are incentivized for increased education, are they now falling below what their sergeants are making? And by my calculation, they are falling slightly below it.
And that is true in all of those cases I spoke about before, whether you're a park superintendent, whether you're a harbor superintendent, that is the case in a lot of cases, depending on the amount of overtime that the lower level gets. However, the benefit to that is, A, the level of responsibility and the opportunity for, um, other job opportunities, but even more so than that is your retirement. Your overtime, you do not get retirement for. And so when people are in these upper level positions, whether it's a department head, whether it's a deputy director, um, all of those positions don't receive their retirement based on that, and that is a significant amount of money, um, and a big game changer for folks later on in their career.
Well, and, and I can also speak. Well, and I can also speak to that as well. So police commander, it's basically the minimum requirement is that they would have those advanced certs. So we are incentivizing it. And if somebody is eligible to move or be considered for a commander appointment, they would need to have those certs to begin with, which is why they aren't further incentivized because they're built into the requirement of the job. So yes, they are educated and they are holding those advanced certs. And also, just to kind of show the difference here. So we're talking about a police officer with an advanced cert pay. They top out at $95,000 a year. Your police commander tops out at $124 a year now. So there's a, still a very considerable gap between the very highest-paid police officer's base rate and that of the next level, which would be the management position of commander.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I could tell there was a difference in the base rate just once you take into account the 7 or 14% and then one group's being paid overtime versus the other. It just, and I appreciate you pointing out, City Manager Slattery, that, that other department heads are also being paid less once they become department heads?
Not at that level at a department head. There's a potential for that. I mean, if you have, we had a sergeant last year that had well over 500 hours. That's not typical. I would say there may be, I don't think it would reach the level. That's like saying that a sergeant's going to make more than the police chief. That, in my experience, has not happened. Could it happen? Yes, I would assume that it could, but that would be an amount of overtime that I think would probably, it would be very difficult to reach that. But not as department head, but I would say that the superintendents, when you look at the difference between a management level and the people that they're supervising, that happens throughout the organization, yes.
And the benefit is that they have better retirement, though.
Yes, their 2% or 2 and 1/2, 2.7% or their 3% is based off of that top salary. If somebody makes $100,000 a year and they make $40,000 in overtime, their retirement is based off $100,000 a year, not the 140.
Yeah, one last question, the, in order to be a commander, is it intermediate or advanced post certification that's required?
Director Folger?
I would need to pull the, I do not have the class spec in front of me, but I believe it's preferred for advanced and required for intermediate or equivalent. So that's the other thing, is that there's an equivalency of those. And what exactly that looks like, we have not had to test that yet because we've been able to hire successfully from within and those folks have held those certs we're talking about.
And that's not required for sergeants?
That is not required for sergeants.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous, yes, vote, motion carries.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. So I see Director Millar, but I'm curious, because of the late nature and that it is the first week of school, if we might be able to postpone this presentation to a different meeting?
I would say that's very much...
Chief Stevens waited the whole time to see this, though.
Oh, did he? Okay. Well, we discussed this earlier. We were concerned about a couple of the other items going late. And so, you know, now we are late. Well, not as late as we have been, but certainly perhaps we should just move forward at this point. So welcome, Director Millar. Please present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's report is about Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFT. This presentation is a broad overview of what is an EIFT or financing district. It talks about how an EIFT finances projects, what types of projects are eligible, and then how you create a financing district. So in simple terms, a EIFT is a specific boundary within city limits that collects a portion of property taxes to finance capital facilities. It is also known as redevelopment 2.0 in reference to what used to be a redevelopment agency. So throughout California, many cities had essentially a sister or a redevelopment agency that acted very similar to what an EIFT does. In fact, the city had a redevelopment agency. That map shows you those boundaries. So it was established in 1970 and then dissolved in 2012. The redevelopment agency is now referred to the successor agency. And that's because the redevelopment agency was able to issue debt or bonds. A lot of those bonds still had outstanding debt in 2012 and even today. So the point of the successor agency is to essentially pay down those outstanding balances until all of those balances are exhausted. So tonight, I will reference or I will make comparisons between an EIFT and a redevelopment agency because they are very similar. The biggest difference is that a redevelopment agency essentially provided additional resources to a city. That's because they were able to capture a portion of the property tax that wasn't available to cities. Today, EIFDs don't add to revenues, they simply redirect them. So how does an EIFT finance projects? Through tax increment revenue. This is a concept that is not well-known. Essentially, what happens is because it is assumed that property tax revenue continues to grow because values go up, that when you establish an EIFT, what you're doing is you're setting a base year. So that is a point in time when revenues essentially stay flat for the city and all additional growth and revenues are redirected to that new entity or EIFT. Another way to see the effects of tax increment is to look at how property tax is distributed to the city. So in fiscal year 2324, the value of all property in the city of Eureka was estimated or assessed to be about $3 billion. If you know the rate of property tax, which most people do, 1%, you would assume that $30 million would be the amount of revenue generated by this property that would then get portioned out to the county, the school districts in the city. But because that redevelopment agency or that boundary still exists, what happens is those values that began back in 1970 and were redirected to that agency, those values get adjusted from that large number, the $3 billion number. So when the city gets a portion of that property tax collected, it's not on $3 billion, but on 2.3 billion. So last year, $23 million was generated in Eureka. Of that $23 million, the city got about 9.4%, which turned out to be about $2.2 million. So a good way to understand the effects of tax increment is to essentially look at the, that adjustment number. So that is the tax increment value. That is money that could go to the general fund, but goes to the redevelopment or the successor agency. If that were not to exist, the city would receive an additional $700,000 a year from that, that boundary and the revenues generated in that boundary. That is a relatively large number, but that is after 50 years of growth within the redevelopment boundary. So on average, that boundary was accumulating about $13,000 per year. So today, it's a big number, but it took a long time to grow to that size. So ultimately, how does an EIFT finance projects? They use the tax increment revenues as pledges against a larger debt obligation. So simply put, if we created an EIFT and it generated $100,000 per year in revenue, what we could do with that $100,000 is essentially use it to pay debt service on a bond that, you know, would be worth about $1.4 million, given today's market. What projects can be, are eligible for financing? Everything from roads to housing, libraries, parks, sewer and water facilities, as well as transit. Anything in these categories has to have a useful life of about 15 years. How do you create a financing district? Step one is you create a team. Typically, that's staff, legal counsel, some advisors. Step two would be looking at feasibility. That's finding a boundary, estimating property values and therefore revenues within that boundary, and then identifying projects to be funded by that EIFT. You might also look at additional revenue sources. This could be in the form of a private-public partnership or working together with another taxing entity, AKA like the county or essentially another city or the harbor district, something like that. Step three is conducting outreach. Once you come up with that feasibility study and an idea of what you want to do, you then take those ideas and those estimates to other government agencies or taxing entities, and then you reach out to the residents and the property owners. Step four, you would create a public financing authority. Essentially, this is a board that would be responsible for implementing and overseeing the financing district. Once you create a board, you create a resolution of intention that is then used to notify other government agencies as well as property owners within the proposed district. And then finally, you go through a PFA approval process. This is where that new, newly-created board creates a financing plan that incorporates the boundary lines as well as the proposed projects and some financing estimates. It requires three separate public hearings, each one occurring at least 30 days after the first one. And then you do need to receive approval from all participating taxing entities. So that means that any agency that receives property tax within that boundary, that could be a library, the county, a city, a school district, there could be 10 or 12 or 15, all of them have to agree to creating this financing district. According to CalEd, this part of the process typically takes about 12 to 18 months. Some final notes. As I've said before, these do not increase tax revenues. No one pays more in taxes. They simply get redirected. Without new developments, they are not financially advantageous. That is because when you look at the growth of property values, 2.5% is, you know, moderate or fairly good. If you looked at that over, let's say, seven years, two years to create the vehicle and then five years of it, or of having it active, assuming that $120 million were invested in that area, you, your revenue would be about $200,000 in what is year seven. If you leveraged that amount, you could get about $2.8 million in a bond. So it does take a lot of growth in property values to really make this thing pencil out. There are some complications with the old redevelopment agency. So if you had overlapping boundaries, essentially, you would want to pay off those debts before implementing the new district. And then finally, it's a lengthy timeline. It doesn't happen in years. It, you know, you're looking at a decade to really get this thing going. And that is all.
Thank you, Director Millar. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. I mean, I think my biggest question is just the overlap with our old successor, redevelopment slash current successor agency in terms of, you know, what kinds of problems do you, or challenges might you anticipate? Yeah.
This is part, or the, my least understood part of an EIFT, but what I interpret as the main issue is that as long as that redevelopment agency is collecting monies to pay off those old debts, you're actually minimizing the potential tax revenue that could go towards the EIFT. So if there's too much overlap, you might, it might take even longer to generate revenue that could then be used for projects.
Could, could, sorry, a follow-up question in terms of though, like maybe just thinking forward. If you, like by starting the EIFT at a certain, like, let's say, let's say hypothetically, we're anticipating growth in Eureka over the next 10 years, right? Like, starting the EIFT now would still freeze those property tax values at the current rate, even though you might see, not see the benefit, you would still be freezing the rates sooner than later?
I would assume that's the case. So as those obligations get paid off, essentially, what happens is the general fund does receive the residual or what's left over from the redevelopment agency. Because the debts were higher, let's say, five or 10 years ago, or, yeah, 10 years ago. And we have made good progress paying off those debts.
Great. Those are all my questions. Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
No, I was writing my questions down and Lane was answering them as I was writing them. So great presentation. It's a really interesting vehicle for finance, for, you know, bonds and whatnot, but it seems like the challenge would probably be convincing the school districts and others, like, hey, we're going to keep this and redirect it somewhere else. Has this, well, I guess the question would be, has this been explored or done in other cities?
Yes, there are examples of other cities doing it. I don't know if that's the biggest hurdle. I think that complicates things, but I don't. And again, I'm not an expert in this category, on these vehicles, but it's my understanding that they don't lose out on any revenue.
Yeah.
Essentially, what happens is that district would receive the same portion of property tax as the city would receive. So the biggest loser is the general fund versus the other taxing entities. But there could be reasons why they wouldn't want you to form it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So when you say, and again, I'm trying to conceptualize it, that the biggest detriment, well, probably not detriment, but what would lose out most would be the general fund. And so it's kind of like you're setting aside these particular dollars or these taxes, saying, we're going to reinvest this or use this in this particular area at a certain time, once we get to a level where we can utilize it for bonds.
Yeah, you're essentially making a lot of assumptions of like, you know, you could have a list of projects. Who knows what projects get funded first? Who knows when the money would be available to fund those projects? And then, yeah, if your general fund gets into trouble and now you're, you know, you're losing money because it's being directed to another entity, that might be frustrating because it might not be enough money to actually do a project, but it could be enough money to keep some positions funded in the general fund. So you do have to make a calculated decision.
And I just want to clarify, and I know Lane meant this, but it doesn't lose money. What it is, is, you know, if we set that benchmark year from... what it is, is, you know, if we set that benchmark year from that geographical area that we pick from, we're not going to be getting any additional revenues as property taxes increase to go into the general fund. All of that will go to whatever is designated by the FPA, or whatever, for whatever purpose it's for. So it wouldn't actually decrease, but we wouldn't see that typical increase in property taxes that we're seeing that go towards the general fund. That would be earmarked for a specific project, and as Director Millar said, it would, it needs to be a capital project, it needs to be something that is physical and will last for 15 years, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I know you touched on it, there are other cities that have done this, I can think of Santa Rosa, San Jose, and so is there anything, I know it's difficult to say, is there anything comparable to Eureka, or Humboldt for that matter, but is there anything that's at least somewhat similar, even if it's Redding, or something along those lines, that might have any FID in there?
I mean, we're pretty special, but.
I don't disagree, but.
Well, I think, when you're looking at a bigger area, a lot of times, they might be focused on like raw land, that will end up being a subdivision, or something like that, where they want to make sure there's enough money to support those roads and the infrastructure. I think in other cases, you're looking at something that was derelict, and now you're seeing potential like a wind farm, or something like that, and that's probably why the Harbor District went forward, because, you know, as industry hopefully grows out in Samoa, that requires a lot of infrastructure, you know, maybe upgrades to your sewer and water systems, so you do want to isolate monies that would essentially enhance that growth potential. So I do think there's a lot of value in it, but the key to success is actually identifying what projects would be funded, and why, and also, you know, determining what boundaries are appropriate, because obviously, you know, capturing residential areas might not make any sense if you're trying to fund, let's say, a seawall, or something. So you kind of want to, you know, match up your projects with the boundaries, and, you know, kind of inspire the property owners and the other government agencies into thinking this is a good idea.
So then it would be possible to collaborate with other governmental agencies, say the county, or even another city, but you'd want to make sure that at least it comports.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might see some synergies, like working with the county, if they want to make sure that, you know, when energy is successful, they might, there might be some collaboration potential there.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. We appreciate your report, it was stellar, thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like it's 9:24, so we have six minutes, if we could get a motion to extend the meeting.
Motion to extend the meeting to 9:45.
Good second. Great, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Fernandez votes no, four yes votes, motion carries.
Councilmember Fernandez, did you want to go home? All right, so, moving on, friends, future agenda items. Anybody have one? Councilmember Castellano? Did you? I saw you turn your mic on.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, again, Mayor and Council. Just a quick report, and then to give you a heads up, staff is working with code enforcement and other entities right now, on a program for trash cleanup, where we're looking at potentially working with some of our community members, and offering cash to have them help clean up some of the issues we have in our green belt. So we're starting it off as a pilot project, if it looks to be feasible and workable, we'll bring back something more to council to discuss, a more elaborate thing with stipends, so just wanted to give a heads up on that.
Can I?
Councilmember Bauer?
I, just a question for you, about the governor's order on encampments, did that have any effect on city staff, or?
I think that we will be bringing something back to council in the near future, to discuss that, as well as the decision at the Supreme Court.
Yeah. It didn't have a direct impact on the city, because the governor doesn't have the authority to tell the city what to do, in simple terms. He did encourage the city to follow, follow his lead, but it didn't have an immediate impact without further action by the council.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to council reports, we'll start with Councilmember Castellano. Mayor Pro Tim.
Let's see, first I'll just say quickly, I attended the, I've been attending, oh, partially city-related, the Live Wall Humboldt Design Team meetings, where we're talking about community health impacts. I attended a meeting, really, well, this is a few weeks ago now, by Forret Report, related to the Earth Center, and just some community partnerships that are forming, specifically with Regional Center. And I attended the HCOG board meeting this past week, and there are a couple of things I want to report back, there's a cool program, Caltrans has got some funding that needs to be implemented in the next year, that are kind of safety improvement-related, and most of them are happening within the city, and including flashing beacons on B and C Streets, and R and O Streets at Fourth and Fifth, so pedestrian flashing beacons, which I'm excited about. Also, there's going to be, I think that's the biggest one, they also got some funding to plan for zero emission vehicle fleet transition with the cities, so that's also exciting. And then, I wanted just to invite the public, the Urica Cultural Arts District is having kind of a celebration and launch, and will soon be launching some different programs for the community, and that will be taking place on Arts Alive on September 7th. So keep a lookout for some great cultural events in the upcoming season.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I went out to and drug poor Councilmember Fernandez with me. We went out and to the National Weather Service, to NOAA out there on Woodley Island, and got to talk with them, and just find out about kind of like emergency operations, and planning, and how that all kind of works here, and one of the things he and I talked with them about was accessibility, and, you know, multiple, you know, specifically making sure that things are, that Spanish-speaking people are also having kind of like equal access to information, and that kind of thing as well. It was really interesting, it was very fascinating to find out how they're doing that, and just kind of, and their desire to kind of like have kind of more robust interactions, like with, like, city and county government, and so it was really interesting. Got to do Pathway to Payday yesterday for the first time in a while, and I just always admire everybody that comes out, and just, and want to put in a plug for just how the brief things that our city manager, as well as our chief of police, shared, and just, always just very accessible, kind people, and I can tell it resonated with the people that had come, and just appreciate that. And then, I went to Friday Night Market with my husband's parents, and it's been fun to watch, they love that, and it's been fun to watch my in-laws, who have traveled all over the world, when they come here, how much they love it here, and love downtown, and love all the things that are going on, and, and just what a positive attitude they have about it, and just think that it's great, and to their impression is that Eureka is just a very different place than it was when they came here for the first time 27 years ago, and meaning in the greatest ways, that they just see a lot of good things, so just wanted to share something uplifting.
Thank you. Councilmember Maltin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I don't have any travel to report. Let's see, the Humboldt Bay Fire, most recent meeting was canceled, postponed, apologized for my absence last time, I was at summer camp, out, proper camp, in the woods, on the river, very nice. Forty screaming teenagers at a time, it was like, it's how I vacation. I was happy to see all the progress at Highland Park, coming back, wonderful things going on over there, it looks great, the park is being used even more, the neighborhood loves that park, and with the improvements, it's just every day now, people are out there every single day, it's lovely to see. The Chamber, we met with the Eureka Chamber of Commerce today, actually, in our two-by-two. We discussed many things, and there's lots of great collaboration going on there around, we talked about disaster preparedness, we talked about the city's SEP Ted program, helping businesses secure properties, we talked about parking, we talked about chamber events, and the Chamber is starting to do more around workforce retention, kind of like when we get people to do certain things, to keep them here, and that's lovely. And in honor of overdose awareness, I wanted to point out to people that you can get Narcan at City Hall downstairs, and that can stop an overdose immediately, somebody who is overdosing on opioids. It's a nasal spray, you don't have to inject anybody, if you, it's just a great thing to have on you. I have been carrying Narcan for years, and I haven't used it on a stranger, but I have given it to nurses, who were in a position to use it, so, I mean, in the community, rather than at a hospital, where they have access to their own. But if you want the opportunity to potentially save a life, just like it's good to learn CPR, and other skills like that, it's good to just have some Narcan on hand, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. I got to attend the city's summer shindig, to celebrate staff, and that was a really fun event, and nice weather, and great to give kudos to staff, who do a lot of hard work. I also attended the Humboldt Marathon, I did not run, I just gave my support, and which was really fun to see, a pretty great turnout, and I promise to do it next year, maybe a half, not a full, but yeah, great event, love to see it happen in here, and I can't wait until the trail's finished, and they can run all the way around the bay. Had an RCEA short meeting, and I also, most importantly, took my son off to school in Bozeman, Montana, and so sent one away, he's fledged the nest, and I will say it was really cool, Bozeman is one of the fastest-growing cities in America, I think, and the amount of development occurring is just astronomical, but what's really cool is that it's all mixed. You have tall apartments next to houses, and all of them are interconnected with the trail system. You can run from, hike, walk from one end of the city to the next, and it's, it all feels connected. And it's most, I don't know who's doing the planning in that city, but it is amazing, if you ever get in Montana, go to Bozeman and see what really well-planned community looks like, very cool. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. As Councilmember Maltin pointed out, there was a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce today, I missed out unfortunately, because of an unforeseen medical appointment, and as Councilmember Contreras Deloche pointed out, I was also on a date with NOAA, it was great to learn about their outreach, and how they conduct their weather modeling, really enjoyed the conversations with them. I'm part of our Redwood Region Economic Development Commission's ad hoc committee for DEI, and so we had that first inaugural meeting just last week as well, and so I know we meet as the full commission next week, and then there's a two-by-two with Eureka City Schools.
Well, it's been a great meeting, thank you, everybody, and I want to let you know that school's back in session, so if you're out there still watching, please drive safely, there are kids in the streets all over town, and as our public commenter said earlier today, we need to pay better attention to our roads and how we're driving. Anyway, on that happy note, have a great week. We're adjourned.